I'm gonna call the work session for the Breckenridge Town Council to order on November twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two. Planning Commission to serious.
Pulling a rank and oh, he's in trouble.
Oh.
I'm on time.
It's just for your clock now.
Can you call it stick?
We haven't gotten to that yet.
Any, any questions on planning?
Um, I sat in on that meeting because it was just training. We have an excellent commission and staff.
Good.
They review their local government certification for historical preservation and reviewed the jump.
So I had a question about the CLG representatives. And the fact that is anybody planning here? Yeah. Oh, yeah. Hey.
They're kind of blending in back there.
Why? It seems like all she cared about were tax credits and not our status as a historic district.
Um, it's up to our, like we would said, the historical district or.
No, but we always, but then.
I think it was a question too, Eric.
Here's what I don't understand. They always tell us this. You guys set your own historic district. But then, when anything changes and we start to lose fabric, they say, oh, you may lose your historic district. Well, take your pick. Either you're in charge of it or we're in charge of it. So I don't. I was hoping Truckee would be here so I could ask him what, you know.
Different standards for our local historic district versus their, the national, yeah. Looking at the national standards and whether we get those set by the Department of the Interior.
Yeah, which are fairly broad and overarching and then ours are a lot more specific.
Okay.
They can't own in more than the federal ones.
Because we're always worried about losing our status and we've talked about it multiple times.
Okay, it's a great question. We could reach out to her regarding.
Could you?
Yeah.
And find out. They never say anything until they want to yell at you about.
Those two.
I remember with Gillor's house. I mean, there was those, we had a couple of houses that they said we were starting to, we were gonna start losing. Our designation because we had too many houses that were drifting away from the intent of.
That was before my time.
Let's follow up next week and when, yeah, Mark and Julie are back, we can talk about it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Back.
All right. Legislative review, we got the two thousand and twenty-three mill levy ordinance. Any questions? Come on down. One.
Afternoon, Mayor Council. So this is, um, we're submitting the setting for the mill levy for five point zero seven mills. Um, this is submitted for the second reading. Um, this is the amount that the town is authorized. And this would generate three point seven million dollars in revenue that are, um, going to be used to defray expenses of the general fund. Any questions?
Questions? All right. Thanks. Uh, repealing policy for mass bonus.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Council.
Hello again.
This is Sarah. I'm being overly precautious before the holidays, so I'm gonna take that off for now. Um.
Sick. Didn't want.
I'm not sick.
Okay.
Um, so we're here for the second reading for the repealing of the mass bonus, which is basically policy four. Um, we met last time for the first reading. Um, I just wanted to quickly touch a couple topics. I know you all are aware, but for the public and applicants. Um, in the code, basically in the bill amendment, the majority of the underlined sections are basically, they're existing in the code. They're from the neighborhood preservation. Big task force that, um, worked on these things in two thousand and nine. So those are not new numbers. They're just being moved from three A from mass to density. So now all those maximums are density. Um, so none of that is new language. There's a couple minor corrections, kind of changing verbiage from mass to density. The only section we did remove from that whole underlying section is the nine hundred square foot garage exemption. Which you all, we talked about it during the work session. So all other viewpoints from that two thousand and nine neighborhood preservation task force have been left. Um, the changes from the first reading are basically just, we did a deeper dive into code cleanup. So we're just cleaning up some. Um, additional definitions, just making sure things make sense. We did a whole code search for mass and then, so it's just kind of cleanup. Um, all the other stuff, there's no changes. Um, we did update part of the definition for density regarding like the trash. Um, enclosures and parking garages that Jay, we talked about last time. So we specifically called out. That garage spaces for single family duplexes and townhomes count as density irregardless of the mesh or the void. Um, so let's see. And then, then obviously we have the exemptions we talked about last time for Lincoln Park and Wellington for the five hundred square feet. Um, and then the exemption for historic, existing historic garages, barns and sheds don't count. Um, like we talked about last time, staff, we're happy to keep this going and revisit, um, any other modifications in the near future. One that we specifically talked about was those carriage houses, the market rate in the Lincoln Park in Wellington. So. Um, Sarah and I are here to answer any questions and yeah, that's pretty much it.
Can I, uh, we shared with you some communications that we received in the last forty-eight hours. I believe they're both, I, I mean, is, is relative to a, uh, project that's going on in Upper Warriors, Mark on Sunrise Point, but. Um, you know, the applicants are the, the people that authored this stuff did express some concerns that. They didn't feel that this was communicated very well. Uh, with the public and that it's here for second reading and they asked if it could be continued. I did share. Uh, with Bob, I believe that had wrote the one message that. That if council decided to move forward with this, that you had committed to revisiting this already. To address one issue and so there would be an opportunity, uh, for somebody to express any concerns for us to look at when we revisited. So.
I didn't really understand their letter.
Did you?
So there, it has to do with them, you know. And you jump in here, but they're doing a remodel. So it's a current buildup on sunrise, but then. You know, when you start, if you build a mezzanine area on an existing footprint, that may now count as density. And which could put them over the sixty-five hundred because there's some large homes up there.
Yeah.
And, uh, let's, let's say if they were at sixty-eight hundred and then they couldn't, they couldn't, they couldn't do the mezzanine because. Um, you know, they'd be over the density, I guess, on their.
And they can't use that garage exemption any, in the future code, the nine hundred square foot exemption, which could have applied. Um, the mezzanine would have still counted in today's code as density because it's a livable square footage. So even if you add like a lofted area, that still does count. But yeah, Rick, Rick is right. They just had questions about that. And then the reason I mentioned those, uh, big underlying changes is people see this bill with. All of these underlines. And so Bob also had mentioned, how did we come up with this number? But this was done in two thousand and nine, so that's not a change. A new change.
It's a mezzanine.
Oh, geez.
balcony.
Area.
For.
An open balcony area like.
What is it?
I don't quite understand.
Like a lofted room, like, you know, like if here you were just to do like a floor.
Oh.
railing and it's kind of you stand over, like in a concert hall.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Where in your house?
Yeah.
Will you greet the people?
Thanks. I don't spend much time doing real estate, so thank you for the help.
Lost mezzanine, pretty entertaining.
You know, we've talked about this at five meetings, I think. Um, so I think it's six.
And planning commission had a work session, so six or seven.
So I think it's, they, there's been ample opportunity to be aware of it. Um. I mean, certainly we can talk about the mezzanine issue when we revisit, but, um, I mean, my initial reaction is. You can put bedrooms in lofts and such and kind of part of our concern is infrastructure and. And, um, you know, people in the valley and, uh. So, you know, I don't know, we can revisit, but for me, it doesn't, it's not, um. Doesn't make me want to slow this down. I think we need to pass it tonight.
What, what is the, what's the base density in their neighborhood? What's the?
Like a, like an app, an average. Their max.
How do we?
Their maximum sixty-five hundred square foot.
Where did that come from? That came from.
That's the whole task force in two thousand and nine that came up with those numbers and it does do.
Told me, I'm sorry to interrupt. Julia told me with that task force, what they did was they looked at average lot size. They looked at FAR, average lot size, average square footage for those areas. And then they came up with what they thought. Was a, a number based on that average, right? The floor area ratio for, you know, for, for that. Now they're arguing that. You know, that, that there's a lot on sunrise that is a two acre lot. One lot on there that's two acres at the end of sunrise point and that that throws the whole thing off. And I'm like. I don't know what to tell you.
Um, I'm not.
It's decided previously.
Yeah. And the code does the previous decisions in oh nine, they do do. You have either the FAR or your maximum square footage, so the first column, yeah. And whichever's less, so a lot of the really big, like this one's a one to two. So basically you can fill up half the lot with a house. So a lot of the time they are two acres. So you could build, if you went with FAR, you could build like a twelve thousand square foot house. So it's limited at the lower number.
That's what I was.
I, I would like to, uh, I don't know, maybe you could send us, send me some photos of mezzanines. In application, I have no, I mean, like I, I mean, are they ornamental or are they? I mean, that, so I just don't know. We don't have to go into it now.
Yeah.
When I read that, I, I just.
Like adding another level within a level.
But, yeah, but if it.
It does count, you know, and it increases the intensity of the use because you're adding.
Bed up there, right? Yeah, but we always, I mean, the assumption is what are you gonna, I mean, you're not just gonna build it so you can stand there and look down at the front door. Yeah, but, yeah, so mezzanines always have ladders to them and, and stairs and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to the designer, but we just, we count them as floor area.
Okay, alright.
The first one that comes to my mind, it was like a condo and they, over the entryway, they made a little loft with a little stairs and they had like a off it, like a work from home desk up there.
Okay.
That's an example.
We heard, I heard from some people in the store that work in the historic district, own land in a historic district. And they're concerned that typically, if you're buying a historic property in that area, it doesn't have a usable garage. It doesn't have something and if they're only allowed sixteen hundred square feet. Then what does that do for parking or is it, you know, in, in that case, you were not to have any enclosed parking. Um, and that a lot of the issues that we're trying to solve with, with eliminating the mass bonus are already addressed in the handbook and of. The historic district characteristic. I'm saying that wrong. The characteristics of the, the different neighborhoods there. Do, do you find that that's true or that those are addressed already and that this could have unintended consequences in the historic districts specifically?
I think it's a good point, Jay. And I think when Mark and I were, on one of our first early meetings, we kind of were thinking of having the exemption. In the group for the garages still for the historic district to not have, you know, to have ample storage. Have car parking be hidden and covered as long as it meets the design standards because you can't like have parking in the front in the historic district, things like that. So. So we were kind of leaning that way originally as staff, but then, you know, we kind of took your comments that some of the historic district. Houses are getting big and kind of overmassing the historic structures. So we kind of turned away with that. Um, there are still options, you know, they can do parking in the rear. Um, if they have the space, the lot coverage, you know, open space, things like that. Um, there's other design routes, a carport potentially could still be done. Um, you just can't have a full garage if you're maxed out. Um. Yeah, I don't know if that fully answers your question.
It does. I guess, uh, could, would you be able to take us through an example of an average lot size in the historic district and what the, um. I guess the maximum density allowed on that, on a typical lot size and how that would look above ground and down and below ground.
Yeah, we can, Sarah and I have, so the historic projects are complicated. Sarah and I haven't worked on a lot of them. Um, and I can't actually speak to one I have now because it's an active project. So I think they're usually pretty small. They're like a quarter of an acre-ish. I'd say, um, and then the maximum, I mean, most of them are over mass already. Or over now over density. Most of them are already, so they can't do a lot of additions to them. Um. I'm just trying to think, let's go through.
Basement density if you landmark, so that still exists.
Yeah, free density under there. And then the, the, all the, the table, well, the table doesn't apply to that.
We can, we can walk you through the typical calculation. So you'd have your units per acre and typically in the historic district, it's nine units per acre on every lot. So if you had a half acre lot, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty square feet, and then you'd multiply that by. Um, the equivalent, which is sixteen hundred for a single family square, uh, single family home. So sixteen hundred times, um.
There aren't many half acre lots in that historic district.
Yeah, yeah. One, big example. So.
You can.
Times nine, times a half, you could, no, that doesn't sound right. Um.
This is why we're planners, because math is hard. I think to answer that generally, it's, most of them are maxed or over.
You would take your lot size, divide by the equivalent sixteen hundred square feet, then multiply by your nine units per acre.
So I do know a lot of like additions or remodels in the historic district compared to a lot of just the regular, not regular, but. The plans we did a lot with you, Jay, at Planning Commission where that have envelopes and stuff. We didn't use the bonuses a lot, but. In the historic districts, those are used a lot and the exemptions for the garages are used a lot when people remodel.
Feel like.
Or add on.
The bonus has led to over programming on these small lots in the historic district in the past. I know you haven't worked on it, but just.
I don't know. I don't know that I've been, I don't know that I have been here long enough to know.
You still have to meet open space requirements, setbacks.
Setbacks.
Heights.
And height. So those things in itself contain a lot. And like we, when we first brought these as a work session, when we were just talking about condos, hotels, inns and lodges, a lot of other mountain towns. Some of them have UPA, but a lot of them are just setback and height limitations. That's what most, and my, the previous municipality I worked at, which is not mountain and not. Ma, uh, you know, has, has no historic district. That was their limitation also with height and setbacks. And like Sarah said, open space.
I think the biggest thing that we've changed though, that will change the complexion of the historic district is not this, but the. The connector code that makes that. So what, I think what we've, where we got a skew is we have a lot of smaller historic units up front with a massive home in the back. And you can't really do that anymore. So. That is sort of solved. If we, you know, if we decide to go back and allow five hundred square feet. In the historic district for garage, I don't think it's a big deal.
Yeah, and we're planning to talk about that in our next round, right? Historic.
I think normally, because normally we would probably not. Propose passing legislation that we know right now we need to tweak, uh, but. Um, I think there's a desire to get, you know, something going on this, knowing that we're gonna come. And we do know that the historic district is one of those areas. We're probably gonna get some dialogue on and hear from some people because we have heard like you have. And so I think there certainly will be an opportunity to address this in the near future and we can, we can make it a priority to, to look at that.
Unless the council would rather just continue and, you know, work on that in the meantime. I'd like to hear other people's thoughts. What are you guys thinking?
I mean, policy wise, I think our intention was to get this in place because it is a shift. Um, I think there are special considerations for historic district. Market rate in Wellington that we've talked about vetting, but outside of the large policy direction, those are issues I think we can vet. Um, separately and I'm supportive of moving forward.
And I, and I hear what you and Dick say. I just, I feel like our position is to set expectations clearly for our community. And by sit, by passing this, and I'm struggling with this myself, but by passing this tonight on the second reading. We are setting a course to all the architects, all the builders, all the general contractors saying, this is a route we're going, but maybe we'll go to the right. Or maybe we'll go to the left. And I think continuing it tonight and working through the Wellington issues, the historic district issues. Could be viewed as a more prudent way of moving forward of not passing something before we're ready to pass it in, in its entirety. And, um, I think it might send a better message of that we're delivering a package that is polished, complete and ready for. Um, our community to absorb it versus. Having the optics of shoving something down the throat, saying, well, maybe we'll pull it back a little bit.
I don't think we're necessarily shoving it down their throats and then maybe pulling it back. I think we've been very clear that we. Agree with the direction that this is going and that we really do have a priority that we want to manage the mass. Um, in, you know, the majority of the town of Breckenridge, and I think we've identified two very specific areas that we'll continue talking about. So I don't think. I mean, I agree with what you said. It's not, um, we're not. Giving every bit of information right now, which is not ideal, but I also think that there is a path forward here. Um, and with some minor tweaks to some specific areas in the future.
I just want, I just wonder what would, what would it hurt? If we slow roll this till we get something that we're, everyone's comfortable with. I mean, certainly not everyone will be comfortable, but everyone up here is comfortable with that. We did the best we could as far as making this something that. Will live on and that we don't have to mess with.
I think that's my question. Is there exposure by not getting it done tonight? Right?
Could be.
Yeah.
What do you mean? What kind of exposure?
Another massive home that's nine hundred square feet of incentives to make it bigger?
So most of the massive homes are on, most of the massive homes are on unlimited lots, so they don't even qualify for this.
Um, I mean, the stuff we've seen, the White.
That, that's the only, that's the place. I mean, if there's a, some, the, the White Horn is the, is the place. Yeah. There's no other place. This wouldn't happen in the Highlands or any place that doesn't have a.
Well, the.
Or any place that has a building envelope, this does not apply to.
Bigger projects that get all the hallways and they're all.
That is true, but what hotel is being built that doesn't already have, isn't already exempt from this? That's the thing. There's nothing right now. P Gates exempt currently. Um, I'm assuming that the North Gondola is currently exempt because they're in process. So we. What's time are we talking?
I don't think we could have it. I think you'd have to talk process because I'm not sure you'd be able to continue this. I almost wonder if it needs to fail if they are. Because there's no way we could have it back and ready for the next meeting. Next meeting's really full and I think staff needs time to reach out and vet a few things. And so I'm guessing we'd be talking. Potentially second meeting in January.
And that would be a work session and then first meeting, first reading, then second reading, then forty-five day.
I mean, it's just, you know, it's a hard time to reach out.
Oh, yeah.
Would it need another work session?
I can appreciate your point, Jay. Like I, that makes sense to me, what you're trying to accomplish there. And, and I always like getting stuff right. You know, having stuff out there that's right, but I'm also a big fan of like, you get a marker out there, hey, we're gonna look at exactly what Carol brought up and, and then. I like making decisions and then improving it. So I'm, I'm certainly open to the amendment route if, if the rest of the crew is. I can see the value in that of, hey, we're, we're getting rid of this and then we're gonna clean up those pieces.
I just think there's a benefit and if this, whether it's right or wrong, whether people decide not to listen what was happening in the last six sessions. Or, you know, whatever the case be. If, if we're hearing from the community that they want input on this and they want to be involved in the process. I think it's, it's extremely important to allow them in and to welcome in.
Mark?
Right. He usually has to click accept, but might be.
Hey, Mark, you there?
Yeah, unmute Mark if you can hear us.
There he is.
Hey.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Did, did you have a comment you wanted to make, Mark?
Uh, you know, I just was following the discussion and, uh. You know, I, you know, staff can obviously go either way, um, on this. I mean, and it sounds like the December meeting is pretty jammed up because I'm not sure how much time we'd need to, you know, resolve all these issues, but, um. You know, it's possible we could come back with a first reading, you know, that first or second meeting in January, um, to address these issues. Uh, you know, we, we talked about this a few meetings ago that there could be some pushback from, you know, some of the architects, et cetera, and. You know, that's come to pass here recently. So, um. Yeah, you know, we'll leave it up to the council's discretion. How do you want to proceed here? We can, you know, handle this either way. We can certainly do what we can to get the word out. If you want to pass something that there is tonight, that there is, we're gonna be an effort. Uh, coming up here in the next couple of months to, to revise this. So I'm glad to do that if you, if that's where the council chooses to go.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody have a question for Mark? My name's here.
What do you think, Justin? I'm with Jake.
Mark.
I don't think it's anything, I don't think it's gonna hurt anything terribly. I think there is a possible, the possible worst case scenario that could occur. But I think it's unlikely during this time of year and, and, uh, I think we throw a lot of, enough curveballs to the community. So I think this time we can err on the side of caution.
Mark, do you feel like there, um, there's much that this would impact in the next? I don't know, three months, I guess, until it's through. Just following up on Todd's question of like, how impactful is either passing or not passing this now?
Yeah, you know, Kelly, my opinion is it's probably not going to impact much. Um, you know. To the point, you know, Dick, there, there may be, there may be a home or two that comes in, but like to Eric's point. It's limited and that this only applies to those handful of subdivisions that don't have disturbance envelopes or building envelopes. So it's not likely we're gonna see a lot of, um, applications in those areas, but we certainly may see one or two, for example, in the White Horn neighborhood. And I also agree with what Eric said. I mean, it's not likely we're gonna see a large building come in that isn't already in process and we can't do anything about those.
Um, I think every, has everybody said their piece? I agree. I'll tell you, I agree with Jay. If it was one thing, if it was just the carriage houses in the Wellington, I was okay with that. But now we're talking about, you know, pretty much making the historic district exempt. I think there's enough questions. From the council about what this stuff looks like. Seems a little ham handed to me to be pushing through an ordinance to come back. I know the timing. I. I, I agree with Dick on the timing. I, I know we've been going down the road. We've talked about this quite a bit. The fact that people are just hearing about it now, I think is, is odd considering how much public engagement we've had on so many other things, but. I don't feel comfortable with. With some of this stuff. I also want to, at some point revisit nine dash one dash twelve, which is the rebuilding, um, piece of the code where we have. Um, there's a, it says. May, so that the town may allow something to be rebuilt rather than will. And I think that, that there's some danger there, especially getting rid of the mass piece of this, that something could burn down more than fifty percent and then we would. Not allow it to be rebuilt or a council could say, yeah, no, you have to fall under the new code. So I, I would like to revisit that in conjunction. Or at some point also.
And there is a section in this density stuff that references that. So it's kind of in two parts, so we can clean.
But that is only single family home and duplex, not multi-family.
But we can. Clean it, take that.
I mean, you think of the Red Roost, what's the Red Roost called now?
Tarmigan.
Tarmigan, Tarmigan burned down. You could theoretically see a council that says, yeah, we're not, you can't, you have to build it under the current code. There'd be no bass bonus for it. It'd have to be built at the density that's on that property. It's a condominiumized. Usage, you know, everybody would end up going from a, say a fifteen hundred square foot unit to like a twelve square foot unit. So. I, I. Square foot unit. So I, I think we need to revisit that too um in conjunction with. I mean, if we pass this tonight, that's fine, but if we, you know, we still need to look at that piece also while we're talking about getting rid of mass entirely.
Are we going to go to the second reading to see if it gets voted down tonight and then we'd resurface it down the road if we need to? Do you want to continue for multiple?
Well, there's only two of us that are three, there's only three of us right now.
That's why I couldn't remember where.
I know the votes are four to continue, four to keep going and three to continue. So we'll see if it passes. Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Management fee ordinance for first reading. All right, let's shoot burly down next.
No, 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 no. Um, this tonight is uh before you is the first reading of the material management fee for the shared dumpster enclosure program in the. In the downtown core at the October twenty-fifth meeting, um, council directed staff to bring back. Um, a draft ordinance, which is in your packet. Um, the one change from the proposed uh. Uh, from the proposal in the discussion was that we include cafes in the type. Two tier, um, which also includes small restaurants as well, and we have made that change. Um, we have also set the fee according to the uh caught, the actual costs that were incurred in the year twenty twenty-one. For this program and then every year moving forward, we will set the fee during the budget process with the same methodology. Um, the ordinance also authorizes the director of public works to establish rules and regulations for this program. You'll see a draft of those uh noticed in this packet at the end of the agenda as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does a user of one of the enclosures have an option to opt out?
Of the program as a whole, yes. But they have to then follow the um. Whatever they do with their own waste still has to be enclosed as per the code.
And it's got to be on their own property.
Correct.
Which on a zero law line. Core won't work for anybody.
But this is the annual fee, right? So it's.
Correct. That's a one-time fee. And so the fee I should, I should clarify goes to administration, operations and maintenance. This is not for the service. Of trash and recycling. It's just for the facility operations.
Ah, gotcha. Okay.
And then you pay trash and recycling.
Me, it came in lower than I expected.
Yeah, me too.
No, right. First time I read it, I did, but then I read it more carefully.
Yeah.
Okay.
They get the door fixed finally on the ice house lot. It'll drop these prices about half than having a guy out there every two days to fix it. Uh, everybody good with this? Thank you, Jesse. Uh, the CPO ordinance change.
Mayor Council, this um actually has been a work in progress for quite some time because we started. Shannon and I have been working on it because we started looking at bylaws. Um, it is not a change in policy. We're just. You know, acknowledging the permanency of the committee. Um, makeup is the same. If you have any questions, let me know.
Question. So we're making it a part, we're going from temporary committee to permanent committee. But doesn't that require that the committee members have to live in the town proper?
Uh, n- not the way this committee is structured because there's a business office within the jurisdiction. It's different than. You're right, our appointees typically do need to be within the boundaries of Breckenridge.
Okay, because I'm good with it. I just want to make sure.
High tech business, so that wouldn't impact their ability to serve.
I probably need to check with Shannon about the two at large. Um, but I think we've vetted that pretty well, so I will be prepared maybe to answer that tonight. How's that? Okay.
They may need to be residents. Okay, other questions? All right, uh, the twenty twenty-three budget and twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven CIP. Oh, welcome back.
Thank you. Lanked on that memo, you found the um, the full dot budget document. Um, for approval by resolution for the twenty twenty-three. Year as well as the, the twenty twenty-three and twenty-seven capital improvement plan um from our October twenty-fifth um meeting. Really, there was only one change and that's um the reduction in expenses in the. Housing fund um for the CMC loan and so that um also affected our. Loan from the excise fund to the housing fund. Um, that's really the only change. Um, the major things to highlight with the twenty-three budget as mentioned previously is on the ten percent reduction in revenues. Um, compared to projection of twenty twenty-two and even with this reduction, we're still um. Twenty-five percent higher than twenty nineteen and um for in sales tax and forty percent higher than. Twenty nineteen in accommodations tax. Um, in terms of spending, um, it's important to mention that. Um, you know, it's mainly in the merit increases and pay adjustments and of course the capital improvement plan. Even though we were not able to include the current compensation study, once that is all finalized and comes out. We will definitely analyze that data and um come back with a bu- budget appropriation as required. Um, there is no blanket expense for our um blanket increase for our expenses. Um, but you know, we did um take into consideration current spending and current prices for all of our expenses. Um, basically with that change with the CMC, um, really our total expenditures. Went down um to one forty-nine, revenues stayed the same at one twenty-five million and um. And with our CIP, we have. Let me find it. Fourteen, um, fourteen million dollars in new projects for twenty twenty-three for the CIP. Six point eight million, the carryover from our prior projects from twenty twenty-two. And as, as well as a forty-eight million restriction for future projects, bringing it to sixty-nine million.
Big numbers, Jeffrey.
Very big numbers. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Is the forty-eight million for future projects? Is that the three years?
Yes, correct. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, Justice Center IGA amendment.
I'm going to do that because Lori is over at the.
BOCC.
The BOCC on the appeal and she just texted that said. FYI, two to one supported Upper Blue Planning Commission denial.
Ask for a rundown. I want a voice boat. I want to, I want to.
He'll be here later.
What was that again, Rick?
Yeah, a bit denial.
So in front of you, we were asked doing a resolution. Nobody's paying attention now.
I'm here.
You're so good.
She's the best one, really.
By far so far today.
Still early.
Resolution that would allow us to amend the IGA that we previously had approved with uh Summit County. For what we're calling the Justice Center project. The reason that we're asking to amend that IGA is because there's been. Some minor changes that have occurred and we need to reflect those in the uh new IGA specifically. That little third acre of land that the town had owned that we're now putting into this project needs to be included as part of the. Um, as the overall tract of the project and shown as tenants in common. For that common ownership, so we want to address that in the IGA. The, the monetary amount, you know, at first we were looking at a four million dollar cash contribution. We reached going to bring two million dollars to the table, but. Because of all the other projects we have gone, going on, we just don't have that cash, so we're. Funding uh the COP in the full amount of this, so we need to change uh, change the uh. The money part of it and also the fact that we will be the one because we're doing the COP, we're required to carry the insurance. So we wanted to address that. Those are the three primary changes in the IGA.
We might have to sell pies. You know what? We got somebody that can help us with it.
I'm sorry, this is dumb question, but.
There's no dumb.
We were, we were bringing the cash, they were bringing the property.
No. Well, we're bringing the financing. And they're bringing the property.
But we're splitting.
Yeah, for a bit. It was cash and then we changed it.
So are they con- is the county contributing to the COP?
Uh, yeah, they, they contribute to the uh, they will share in the debt. So if the annual debt payment on this project is a million dollars a year and at with revenues. Uh, we're only able to pay uh five hundred thousand towards debt, the other five hundred thousand dollars would be. Split equally fifty fifty between the county and the town to cover the debt. It's the same, it's the exact same model we use uh here on landing. Uh, when we built that, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? Everybody good? Or do you want to stop building this thing right now? Put a halt to it, okay?
I don't think I'd go over so well.
Was it?
Tell the trees are gone.
Right. New ball field. Letting hill or something. Were they blowing snow on the sledding hill? They were. Yeah.
How cool is that?
With big guns tonight.
Since here to help with any questions about the fiber update.
Oh, good.
So I just updated there on the turn dam. We're still working hard out there and then everything else has been pretty much wrapped up.
I have some issues.
Oh, dear.
Is anyone else, uh, is, does anyone else get confused when you're heading south? Kind of um from, let's say, uh.
You're talking about the dam now or something else?
Oh, we talking about the dam?
I think we're talking about the roundabout.
That's what I'm talking.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's, it's kind of confusing. Oh, you thought you're confused too?
Of being confused.
Yes, yes, I got screamed at the other day because you, you drive it.
Funky.
Yeah, you, you, one thing you, you, you say you want to go straight, they have an hour early on to be here and then all of a sudden you get. To, you know, a little bit further and then you really have to kind of merge to the right. And if you're doing it, going up the ski area. Um, that's kind of confusing and I'm talking, I'm going like eight miles an hour. So if I can't do it at that speed, you know.
So that's a tricky part. So we go from the two lanes, the new two lanes in the roundabout and then the lanes drop down for through to one. So the outside lane turns into a right only lane to go up ski hill.
Right.
Inside lane of the roundabout is your through lane.
Right.
To head south.
Okay.
Striping.
But then we.
We went back and forth with C dot a few times. We thought this was the best solution, but it needs more tweaking.
Yeah, but then when you, when you get, you know, heading towards Bank of the West or whatever it's called, um, you know, next to that, if you want to go straight. It's kind of, you know, I, I find myself kind of getting forced over to the, to the left and yeah, it's just comparing, striping would be, would. You're on it.
We know it's a tough spot. We're going to try to work with C dot to make it a little bit more intuitive, but it's tough where you go from to. To the old section.
Yeah.
Unless we get somewhere right away, there's, we can't do it.
Right.
Like one hundred percent like we would want to.
Yeah.
So it's always going to be a little awkward and we're hoping. As locals learn it, then you know, guests can sort of fall in line, but I do think it needs a little work.
Okay.
I haven't had any trouble with it myself.
Really? Yeah, but.
And drive off.
So right in for pickup, like if you're coming around the corner and you're going north and it's right into the lot and then. Drive through is so much better here. Yes, I've done it twice and it's really, I mean, obviously there aren't as many people in town yet.
Say after Watson, pretty much if you can.
Yeah.
It's but the reality is this winter, when they can't even see the striping, they'll just, people are going to make up their own rules.
I mean, at that point, can we get a camera out there to see what people generally do and? And then just set it that way?
I mean, they'll be coming double, they'll be, they'll be squeezing in for like thinking it's still double through lane, right? And you know, then trying to merge after they get through the intersection. I mean, this is all stuff you just see, you'd see, we'd see it happen even before this.
Yeah.
Um, but.
And it's tough because we're, we don't own the roads, so anything we want to do needs to see that.
We're just going to blame C dot for this.
But we'll spend a little time. I mean, we want to, we want to look, I mean, this is the first winter, right? When everything now is supposedly working and we want to see how. Things move and what, what's going on, so.
Texting signs, so you really paid attention when you.
But we're reading the signs, then they wouldn't have so many problems.
Fast improvement. It'd be crazy.
No, but I hear you, Jeffrey. We're, we're watching it.
Uh, it looks beautiful.
Yeah.
Well done with the railing and the face.
Nice.
My dog down there the other day.
Like the entrance to town, it's so nice.
Yeah, right. It's good.
For a picture, that was his thing.
I don't think you're supposed to be in there.
On uh fiber, um, so with multi-dwelling units. We are responsible for wiring the building, but is ALO doing their due diligence when? One unit is interested, are they aggressively marketing?
That's a really good question. I've been working with ALO to make sure they market. Um, I've actually been doing some marketing and going out to the units and seeing if people are interested. But you're right, you know, what's the balance here? If two people in a ten person complex are interested, do we pay for the wiring or not? So I think um if you guys have any suggestions, I'm all ears, but. Yes, we're working with ALO to up their marketing efforts.
I think, I mean, th- there's no way we can just record, have that part and parcel of, of the building and incorporated into the cost.
We're trying, we're, we have suggested strongly that we do that on building two, which is a hundred and seventy-five units. Because we have more control over that one in the early phase and because. There are regulations around building one due to light tech funding. And you uh. Opportunities and all of that. And honestly, I think. We missed that window a little bit with that one, so I think. I think we have, we have made it very clear that we would like to see that just be automatic in building two, that it's in, built into the rent and every unit has. Um, it as ALO.
Cool.
Talking about Altaverte specifically, Altaverte one, okay, okay. Cause Altaverte one is wired, the whole building is.
Other questions? Thank you.
A lot of work.
A lot of work. Mr. Mobility.
He is flexible.
He is flexible. Brought Teddy with him. This must be some, some important going on. Yeah, good afternoon, mayor and council. You just saw the brains, now you get the bronze. Couple of quick updates, uh, transit and mobility uh that aren't on the update. Upper Warriors Mark Shuttle begins tomorrow, eight AM to eight PM. So excited about that. It is now called the Silver Route. Used to be the green, but now Altaverte is green. So I know this is a um. Repeat of something I said a couple of weeks ago, but just want to make sure it was clear. So that starts tomorrow for the season. And other good news, snow staying will begin on uh December seventeenth. Um, for the, for the winter, it's going to be Saturdays, Sundays and holiday Mondays pretty much to early May, so.
Where will that drop off?
Uh, right in the station. So we're going to set up a spot right at the top of the horseshoe, so they'll be closest to the gondola, so. Uh, other questions?
We're going to have snow staying on our app.
I don't believe so, but we can look into the.
Information. It doesn't have to have the GPS, but it'd be nice if that was on the route.
Great idea. It's good, thank you for that.
Hey, on that uh, Break Free Ride app, it's not working. It's the best thing to do to like delete it, then reinstall it?
Yes, okay. Check that your uh location services are on. It seems to be one of the big issues people are having.
Hey, all right, thanks, because it's been working for me. Okay, maybe you can help me with mine. I got, I have.
When's the route out to Altaverte start?
Uh, we are going to start all of our, basically our winter.
Uh, we are going to start all of our, basically our winter routes, which you see at the bottom, uh, proposed winter route plan. We're going to start that December ninth. Uh, while Altaverte won't be open, we still see the opportunity to bring people in from, uh, Airport Road. So that could help us out a lot.
Look forward to that. It'd be great.
Do you want council's opinion on the purple A, purple B discussion, or are you just sort of figuring that yourself?
So we discussed it after our discussion this morning and we are doing as recommended here. So, um, we're going to go with that purple A to purple B. Switch over at three forty-five.
You can change the signs and everything too.
It's the same as it has been the last few and it's currently is this way. So yes, we'll, we'll go from the A to the B.
Um, will everybody be able to attend bus to work day for a little bit and add donuts and coffee? The thirteenth.
Thirteen.
What day?
Thirteen.
December thirteenth. If you can, I think that's a great start to our stuff.
You're not allowed to eat all the donuts. You have to hand them out.
That's right.
Jeffrey. Yeah. I'll bring them to the tub. I'm gonna. Fundraise like Rankin. They'll sell donuts.
We got the yellow. Can I like get dibs on the yellow round?
You can, whatever you get, you know?
He's going to want to change routes. Take whatever you give me. The other question they had in here was about the name for the e-bike share. Everybody cool with the e-share?
With the what?
Recky ride?
The bike share?
Came down for me. It makes total sense.
Everybody good with that?
As opposed to the Pica?
Yeah, I meant like.
And other ideas as well, so. Brecky ride plays off the Breck Free Ride, we think.
That you crank it.
Like it.
Perfect. Any other?
Good with that. What else?
Yep. Questions on the mayor's challenge?
Yep. Yeah, it's kind of laid out in the memo there in your packet. Um, and we're open to any comments or suggestions on it.
Do want to make sure that we're pushing that this is an all the time thing rather than just the week that we're giving prizes out, so.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, our challenge is that every week we, is to have somebody look for an alternative mode of transportation. Uh, one day every week. That's the goal.
I think the goal is, is to have these challenge weeks with some prizes to help form the habit, get people to maybe that wouldn't normally do it to, to, um, take alternative transportation during those weeks. And maybe it, they start to realize, oh, taking the bus isn't so bad, or I can walk to work. Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah. Yeah.
See you now. Thanks, guys. Great job.
Sustainability.
So I understood from the previous meeting that there were some questions around pay as you throw and universal recycling implementation and marketing. I did outline, um, some details in the memo, um, and included the, um, third party marketing contractors campaign, um, that is being managed by HC three. And so that will roll out both in Breckenridge and in Frisco. And if the county adopts, um, which they should be scheduling a work session here soon, um, that will be the campaign that will be community wide. I have been meeting with the haulers, most recently Waste Management, had them review the rules and regulations again, that it's at the end of the agenda tonight. We have a meeting with Timberline coming up December third, I believe. Um, and so everybody has the information that we have up to this point and have had opportunities to comment on the rules and regulations. Um, and then we have also developed a webpage with the compliance reporting and resources on there. I sent a link to you. It's not live yet until we finalize the rules and regs. I don't want that to go live, but it is pretty much built out and ready to go when those rules are, um, finalized. Happy to answer any questions. I also included in the memo, brief update on the EV equitable car sharing program that Teddy applied for through Excel Energy. Um, and then also the e-bike share, which you guys just gave us a thumbs up on. So.
I do have one other thing on the e-bike share, and that's to make sure that we do get a local pass. That. I mean, I'd like to understand the ramifications of that. I know we don't have to generate that much money out of the thing, but it'd be great if we had a local pass that was not expensive. Like twenty bucks.
We're, we're definitely going to do that.
Okay.
Yep.
I had a question. Um, well, first of all, thank you so much. You guys have been so busy for months and months and months, so there, there's just so many cool things coming out of your guys' office. So thanks for that. Um, I followed the link to the Sustainable Breck um, website. It was the Zero Waste Sustainable Breck. And the way that starts out is in twenty twenty-two, the town of Breckenridge adopted two ordinances, which form the basics of pay as you throw. I was wondering if instead of starting it that way, like, cause my understanding, and I feel like the discussions we've had is that this is very grassroots. Like this has been coming for a very long time. This came from a group of people who were very passionate about it, you know, five, ten years ago. So I was wondering if instead of starting with like our ordinance, if we could give a little, just a few sentences, because I know people don't want to read very much text and there's already a lot of text, but I just, I'd like to change that, um, message, I guess, that like this is something that came from the town of Breck. We want to be sustainable. That's a, you know, um, I mean, that just comes out in so many different facets of being a member of this community.
Yeah, absolutely. And I actually, um, thank you for saying that, because I was going to say, oh, I'll just use what I used under the history tab. But then I clicked in there and realized it's a bunch of placeholder text still. So a little bit more to come on that. Um, but yeah, we can certainly tell the story in a different manner at the beginning.
Awesome. I just think it would go a long way to helping people understand how we got here and especially the timing and everything, you know?
Yep.
Thank you.
Will do.
And on the website, I think it'd be great to kind of build out that opening, giving more rationale and putting it in a little more simple terms. And also if the goal is for this website to be a landing page, when we're pushing out all these marketing materials to make it as user friendly as possible. If we're referring to an ordinance, maybe link the ordinance just to make it as easy as possible on the user. And then, um, I know I'm getting questions from property managers on the universal recycling ordinance. And I know we're a bit out, but if we could add compliance states or just some of those, um, hard deadlines for that. Otherwise, on the marketing plan, um, I did have a couple of questions. While, um, the renderings or the, um, concepts look great, I'm really curious about their outreach strategies. Because we know HC three supporters, our supporters in general, aren't going to be the ones that we need to get this information out to. So I'd really like to see, um, the marketing plan have an emphasis on going through to, um, different forms of communication, including Spanish media, um, leveraging any resources we have. The haulers are willing to share their customer list or email addresses. We know those are clients to target those, um, as well as making sure for hardship grants, we're targeting areas. So our workforce neighborhoods, our local H O As, really leveraging those hyper local outlets to get information help.
Thank you for that. And we are waiting, it's a little bit of a chicken in the egg right now, because HC three hasn't put together their full plan. They're waiting on budget approval from Strong Futures. If that doesn't happen, then we, we are prepared with part of our budget for next year to look more specifically for Breckenridge. And we actually just talked to Brooke, what, what, my days are running together just the other day, about what that looks like if Strong Futures doesn't come in with the marketing side. So, um, we have a couple, we have a Plan B and a C, but I appreciate the, the Spanish language and the targeted outreach specifically around hardships and stuff as well. So we will have that.
Yeah, great. Do we know when Strong Futures decisions will be?
I do not.
Okay.
I don't know.
Sorry, I don't know either.
Your questions?
I don't think it's promising.
But are they, so is, are they planning to use that money in a different way?
So, um, the most recent meeting I was at with the BOCC where they were talking about the proposed Strong Future Budget was that, um, you know, they have a list of priority policies that the advisory committee has put forward. Pay as you throw is at the top. If pay as you throw, um, if the portion of that budget doesn't get approved, it would, it could potentially go to general marketing or get reallocated to other program funding. Um, it's really, the proposal that the committee has put forward, the advisory committee has put forward, is being sort of kicked around and retooled quite a bit. So I can tell you what we recommended, but what is being discussed and how it gets applied, um, it is a little bit different than what we had proposed.
But there's some portion of that that's supposed to go to trash and recycling and.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I was talking about the recycling specific funding for Strong Futures is one point eight million. Um, not all of that is pay as you throw. So pay as you throw is one particular program within that full budget.
Yeah.
And the other, the other things, for example, like the, um, like standing up the Silverthorn Recycling Center, the glass and food scrap depots, the mattress recycling, those are all programs that are paid for out of Strong Futures as well.
Yeah.
Um, and so they're just looking at that budget more holistically than saying, you know, just pay as you throw. Um, I think the concern from Commissioner Pogue was that, um, the HC three had proposed in that budget, the pay as you throw to be, uh, very targeted and specific marketing, like you were just talking about, Carol. But if, if they don't move forward with pay as you throw, um, they were concerned about spending it only on pay as you throw, even though two communities within Summit County have passed.
Yeah.
These ordinances. And so what her question was, was could we just make it more general to recycling education and marketing? In which case we could still do pay as you throw information, but she wanted it to be a little bit more broad. Um, I think the reality is, is that that month, that already exists. And so, um, we need this targeted funding for pay as you throw.
Thanks for that.
Yeah.
Explanation.
I agree.
Yeah. So what, what, I mean, what do we do to push? So if they, you're talking about if the BOCC does not do pay as you throw, then they just don't care about.
So there's kind of two, yeah, there's kind of two options as I, as I am interpreting their discussions and that is, um, you know, option A, they're all in. It's a moot point. They approve the budget. We go forward with everything that we've been talking about for the past couple of months. Um, Plan B is they don't approve pay as you throw. And then there's this question on the funding. Do they want to fund it anyway and help Breck and Frisco? Or do they want to make it more general recycling funding? Um, and the, I guess those are kind of the two options. And where they're at on pay as you throw is that, um, most recently, I think Commissioner Blanchard was supportive, Commissioner Lawrence was generally supportive. Commissioner Pogue wanted some additional information around the hardship program and what that might look like. Um, but they are bringing it back for a policy work session. And so it seems like they've kind of changed their tune a little bit and they're looking at moving this forward. It doesn't feel like it's going to move forward as quickly as getting on our same timeline though, which basically, you know, kicks off January first. We're out there doing all this work we've been talking about, so they might be a little bit delayed.
I think there's value in hearing from not only Frisco Town Council, but this Town Council and telling them that we know that they are undecided on their approach, but we would hope that they would still support us in our efforts and what we're trying to do together, because it's only going to make this, um, as we work through it stronger for the future. I think and do that. And so I would, you know, maybe you can talk to your people, you know, and I, certainly we have MMC. But I think it needs to go, uh, more, even whether it's a letter or phone calls from you all or emails to them. And I think that'll go a long ways.
I, I really do think we should write a letter, supporting pay as you throw. And then supporting Strong Futures money that's generated in both Breckenridge and Frisco being used for the pay as you throw program, Breck and Frisco.
And I think we can, I mean, I think it would go a long way to say that, like, we understand that there's some maybe hesitancy and that they, they want to take a longer time to roll it out, but it just, their program is going to be easier to roll out in other parts of the community because we're rolling it out here. So I feel like that's worth investing in. So we're gonna, you know, bear the brunt of the burden of rolling out a new program. It's worth them investing in that.
Letter. Go supported it, then the mayor that's from each place could sign a letter or something.
It would be snarky. Counterproductive.
Sounds good.
So, uh, you want us to get a draft letter?
Yeah.
For.
And maybe you can get Hunter to sign it too.
We make some calls to.
Be great. Yeah, that also, but it'd be nice to have something a little more formal and public than just, uh, behind the scenes phone calls.
Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, housing and childcare update. Lori, Cory?
So.
Lori and Cory.
Lori and Cory show. Um, we actually don't have anything in your packet, but I wanted to give you a quick update on just some of the projects, since we have a lot going on in terms of, um, properties opening up. And, um, I, I will start with the lodge and we're calling it the lodge because we don't have a better name yet. Um, you know which one we're talking about when I say lodge. Um, so, um, you know, we, we just acquired that property. What was it? About two months, September fourteenth. And, um, we had our first two, um, town of Breck employees um, actually occupy the, the units, um, their units. Um, and they were ecstatic to have units because, um, these were folks that were really desperate for housing, living in vans and that sort of stuff. So, um, two have actually stayed overnight and loved their units. Um, I think by the end of today, we'll have four in there. Um, we have a, a total of nineteen, um, of the single occupancy units there, um, a great deal for folks, eight hundred dollars a month. And, um, those are fully assigned, um, and primarily to, um, Public Works Transit Street Park. I think we might have one rec center person in there, but, um, it is basically full and the move-ins will be staggered. Um, we're basically starting on Friday when we moved our first person in all the way, um, through December. Um, but the bulk of those move-ins will be in November. So, um, the lodge is going well. Um, and especially considering that we've not owned it that long. So really a huge, um, shout out to the county for helping us get that building ready, because it had a lot of issues, whether it was water, sewer, the condition of the units, the, the, the furnishings, um, the wifi, um, access to the buildings. Uh, so it was a lot of challenges and thank you to the county for really doing that.
We have an onsite manager.
Um, we have a property manager. It's being managed by Quorum and it's super interesting, because some of you may know Ricardo, who works for Quorum, who manages Pinewood one, Pinewood two, Coto Flats. Um, Ricardo years ago actually managed the lodge. Yeah. I don't think it was when he was with Quorum, but he is quite familiar with the property since he was there like ten, eleven years ago managing that property. So it's like, uh, yeah.
Is he willing to go back?
To go back. Um, you know, that we were really happy to have him onsite because he does know the building. So, um, Lodge is a good success story and people are super stoked to have a place to stay. Um, block eleven is, um, and this one, um, we are super excited to get it open. Um, you know, we started, um, we broke ground on this one September of twenty-one. So, you know, and it is supposed to be done according to the contract, um, January one. Um, and block eleven, uh, if you don't remember, is the three buildings right next to Blue Fifty-two. Um, we are pretty much on target. Um, I do believe we will have folks moving into the first building in mid-December. Um, as you recall, that's going to, um, be the childcare, um, folks. And then right after that, the other two buildings. But, um, we may be rolling into early January on the other two buildings, but one we're hoping, um, mid-December. And you know, we have a sign up sheet for all twenty-seven units there and, um, there are still a few openings um, for town employees. Um, and we have reached out to the HR liaisons for all the departments and for them to contact Matt. Specifically if they want us to reserve one of those units at block eleven for a town employee in their department. Um, and like I say, I think we still have just a few left there. Um, so that's, um, block eleven, that's Lodge. Um, Altaverte one, obviously the other big one and, um, eighty units. We think we'll have, be having our first move-ins. Um, uh, in December, probably the end of December. In December, probably the end of December before we have first move-ins. We've been working with Gorman on trying to um make the uh lease-up process a little bit easier for folks that are interested in that, um, those apartments. Um, been working with Mountain Dreamers and FERC and other partners in the community to try to involve them so that they can help their clients because it is a complicated process. The light tech process, which provides a lot of capital to construct the project, does create a lot of challenges when you go to lease up and spend in terms of the AMI caps and just the complexity of the, the lease. I mean, the lease is so long. So basically we're still sending anybody that's interested um to the Alta Verdi website um to get this um qualification application, just to do a first level. Do you basically qualify and should you pursue this and do a full lease? And we're still sending folks to complete that qualification application. We have some at Town Hall that people can pick up if they don't want to email Alta Verdi. Mountain Dreamers and FERC will also help people navigate that process of just getting in the um in the loop or in the process for those units. But um expect the first move-ins, you know, Kimball still won't tell us when she's going to have her CO, but um we're still expecting um move-ins in um late December.
So what percentage of people that originally applied end up making it?
Right now, um, it's four out of five that actually submitted an application who end up being qualified.
Well, that's not bad at all.
I mean, sorry, sorry, one out of five. Other way, four out of five are not qualified. Sorry. Oh, yeah. Four out of five are not qualified. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you. No, that's horrible. It demonstrates.
Tech again.
Yeah.
I mean, what a.
The incomes.
Yeah, they're over income.
Light tech, so.
It's an important.
Money, but if nobody can live in them, that's.
Well, let's see. Let's see what.
I mean, I think we will fill them up, but there's a lot of people who are frustrated because they're over income, but that's.
Under missed every all the, you know, details. And so our own employees are frustrated.
Yeah.
Cause they're going over there and then, you know.
The good thing about what we've done in terms of the housing program is provided a variety of diversity of housing price points. I mean, when we bring Justice Center on the end of next year, we'll be able to decide, do we want income caps? Do we not? Cause we, with the county own that project. So we can, you know, that'll be an additional 52 apartments that will be well priced and we can set whatever kind of um qualifications we want on our tenants relative to income. So um, you know, that'll be an option for people. It's not right now. It's not this season. Um, but we have a lot of apartments coming on in the next year and a half. So.
Tech project. Yeah, chose Gorman too. So.
Help like spreading the word to get more people into these units? Or do you feel confident that enough um applications are coming in that you're going to be able to?
I think Kimball is starting to do some marketing. Um, there should be some ads coming out in the daily and in on Spanish radio as well. And Crystal um directing people to start applying, but right, you know, this week, right now they're fine. I would say as we go another week or 10 days, then we may want to push it more. Let's see what their ads do that go in next week.
Okay. Remind me what the income caps are again. Does it vary with the different classes?
There's 60, there's 30% AMI, there's um 50% AMI and there's 60% AMI.
So it matches what the rents are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it matches what the rents are.
Wow, that's really.
Some of the stuff that I've been hearing from people that I work with is it's the process that just wears them down where they keep contacting, keep emailing, trying to get a questionnaire, which is the precursor to a full application and they can't get the questionnaire, then they submit the questionnaire. They want to do a site visit. People are not on site and just says a sign handwritten signs saying closed and be back another day. And so I think the process needs to be refined so that, because I think we're having a lot of people drop out before they even know if they're qualified or not because of frustration of this isn't even worth it because they're getting rung through the wringer. appointments that are not being withheld, you know, held up, communication not returned. And so.
Is that Kimball?
That is not Kimball. Um, Kimball is construction for Gorman. There's a whole nother department that is lease-up and property management. Now, we will have folks on site, so we'll have an onsite office open two days a week. I don't think it's starting next week. I think it starts the week after, but at least then it'll be a little bit easier because they can go to the office those two days and talk to a person.
You know what days of the week that is?
Tuesday and Thursday, as I recall, but let me check.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Yes, as you learn more, can you send us a just update so that to Jay's point, we can communicate with the people we know?
Yeah, it's.
That'd be awesome. Thanks, Lori.
Yep. So other things we're doing is um just because there is just so, there are so many people looking for housing right now. We are um uh probably going to convert uh either four or six of our buy downs to um to uh housing for employees. Um, and that would mean we will be selling, it's either three or five depending. We have a few offers pending on the actual sale of our buy downs. And we really wanted to close those before the end of the year. So we're feeling pretty good about three, but we might be able to get up to five, depending on some negotiations that are going on. But the rest of them, um somewhere between four and six will be used for employees as well. And um, you know, that's Town Houser and Blazing Saddles, Highlands Green. Grandview units. So those will be good units for employees too. So that's kind of an update on lease-up stuff. We're continuing to work on some grants. Um, there's a good option for grant on Alta Verdi Two from DOLA for the solar. And there's a, a really good option for a significant grant on Stillson um to help, help offset our subsidy on Stillson. So continuing to try to work on that. But um, you have any questions of us?
No, and thank you again for all the work, especially with Alta Verdi One. I think Lori gave us a update at one point, but I think we heard there were issues with the process, especially with some of our partners, FERC Mountain Dreamers growing together that largely serve that lower AMI population. And I mean, Lori, thank you. You acted so fast, got a meeting together with Gorman, let the partners really vet the process, learn more. And I think on our side, we need to just make sure that Gorman's following through with some of the things that they said they do, but otherwise they've been a very willing partner to adapt.
Yeah, thanks.
Anything else? Childcare, anything?
No updates, more people applying every week, which is great. So more slots opening up at our centers. So we've had several uh applications in the last couple of weeks that we're processing through now.
Sweet. All right. Thank you.
Mayor, just, we are running a little behind here. So I'll just, we don't have any committee reports
Yep.
in the package uh for financials. I'll just tell you, I mean, I think it's pretty self-explanatory what's in there. We did see the trend shift a little bit as we looked at our September returns.
What?
If you have any specific questions, Pam is here uh to address those, but if not, we'll just move through that.
Move along. All right. Any questions? No? All right, BoEC Capital Campaign for amended lease review, Sonia and company.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
See you guys. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having us. We really appreciate the opportunity.
Hi Bob.
Oh. And there's.
Everybody here, we okay?
Yep. Um. I am, good afternoon. My name's Sonia Norris. I'm the executive director of the BoEC and Jamie Omermeyer is with me today. She's our Wilderness Program Director. And larger than life up there is Bob Gregory, uh, one of our esteemed board members. We also brought a couple of BoEC staff, our board chair, as well as our vice chair are joining us today. And Kate Berg, who is with Norris Design and has been very helpful to us in um putting together this concept plan that we're um going to share with you today. So um, we're super grateful to have this opportunity um to present to you all our vision for the future of BoEC's Wilderness Campus and the F and D Placer property. It's an ambitious vision, um but it aligns with our goals to continue providing access to inspiring, meaningful outdoor activities for people with special needs and disabilities for many years. Um, over the course of the past 46 years, BoEC has served 40 thousands of people um living with disabilities and other challenges who've come to Breckenridge for that once in a lifetime opportunity to try something new, to make new friends, to try things that they never thought possible. Um, but it's important to point out that we certainly have not done this alone. Um, the long time relationship between the BoEC and the town of Breckenridge has shown that over the course of almost 50 years, pretty amazing things can happen when two entities work together um to do so. So for that, we are very, very grateful. I know that most of you are pretty familiar with the history of the BoEC, but um I wanted to just go through a little bit of a timeline. Um, for those of you who don't know the history, um because it's been a bit of a walk down memory lane for some of us, for me, for, for Bob, for, for Jamie, as we found some folders that had some pretty interesting um information. So bear with me as I, as I go through the reviews.
I can learn.
So in the late 1970s, Jean Dayton and a team of pretty dedicated volunteers began to bring people with disabilities up to the F and D Placer property. At that time, um, there was just a dirt road leading from Main Street up to that area. And the activities were anything that didn't require a lot of equipment um or facilities because there was none at that time. Uh, in 1980, the town of Breckenridge granted the first official five-year lease um to what was then known as the Colorado Outdoor Center, Colorado Outdoor Education Center of the handicapped, which was changed. But that lease, as Jean likes to say, was five eight, five years for $5, five years for five bucks, as Jean Dayton says. Approximately 38 acres located west of the town of Breckenridge in the area of Sawmill Gulch, also known as F and D Plaza for $1 a year. Um, and that is a quote from the lease itself. The name of the center was changed in 1984 to the Breckenridge Outdoor Education Center um as a way to show that we are a little bit more inclusive than only serving um individuals with disabilities and special needs. And then the lease was extended um for five more years in 1985. It was during the 1980s that the intern cabin and the old cabin were brought to the site and TPs and other structures offered ways to camp during the summertime. In 1990, it was clear that there was a growing demand for BoEC outdoor programs and capital improvements, which would um allow the programs in the center to continue to improve and provide access um to adaptive outdoor programs. Funding had been secured um to build what is now the Scott Griffith Lodge, uh, which would provide accessible overnight lodging to participants. However, um, the long-term lease was one stipulation of the funder um at that time in order for us to secure that donation. Uh, so the BoEC Board and Staff presented to the town of Breck in early 1990, like much like we are doing here today, to ask for a longer term lease um to be given to the BoEC in order for us to secure capital funds, which would allow us to um make these critical improvements to the site. On March 7th, 1990, Gary Martinez, Town Manager, stated in a letter to Dick Carlton, who was the president of the Board of the BoEC at the time. The Town Council once again made a clear statement that the BoEC is an important part of this community and a recognized leader in providing services for individuals with special needs. That for 25-year lease for a portion of the F and D Plaza property, allowing for exclusive uses, including capital improvements and programmatic uses was granted to the BoEC on March 14th of 1991. This is also when the current exclusive and non-exclusive use areas were defined, which exist to this day. Once the longer term lease was granted, things happened pretty quickly. The building of the Griffith Lodge, um, which provided the accessible overnight lodging was built. That was an investment of over $250,000. Building of the Ropes Course, the first of its kind in the country and one of the only ones that still allows for someone in a wheelchair to actually roll onto the ropes course on their own without being lifted by ropes and pulleys um up to the um, up to the, up to the program area. Exposure, expansion of the programs also at that time included the start of the water program, purchasing of canoes and rafting equipment. And finally, um, much to the um sheer joy of many of the people living in the intern cabin at the time, electricity and running water were added to the intern cabin. So um, it's also important to point out that um BoEC has committed over these many years to be good stewards of this property and to welcome visitors of all, of all types to, to join us in, in the use of that beautiful area. It's been our commitment since the beginning um to encourage positive interaction um with both local residents and visitors who visit this in growing numbers every year. Over the years, we've consented, BoEC has con- continued um to invest considerable resources into making improvements that would benefit all visitor, all visitors and programmer and, and participants, including the building of the accessible fishing dock, building of the wheelchair-friendly hiking trails around the lake, um wheelchair um accessible friendly trails to all activity areas. And just this year, we added perimeter fencing around the exclusive use areas, a powered gate at the bottom of the driveway. And we are working closely with members of um staff from Parks and Recreation and Public Works to make other um important public use improvements. So in, you know, we believe that with continued support from the town of Breckenridge, um, the BoEC will be able to remain an important part of this community and serving that population, um just as Mark Gary Martinez stated in his um, in his memo 33 years ago. Um, and while our plans are ambitious, we do know that um we are, we know that with um the continued support of the town of Breckenridge and so many others who support the BoEC, that we'll be able to continue to provide access to not just people with disabilities and special needs, but to so many other populations who are routinely excluded from access to the outdoor activities and programs that we all enjoy and benefit from. So with that little history lesson and uh, and my personal pitch to you all, I'd like to introduce Jamie, who's going to take you through the vision of the Wilderness Program. And then Bob's going to close it out.
Hello, everybody. I'm so glad to be here. Um, thanks for having us to talk to you about this. Um, you know, I moved to Breckenridge in 1999, the second I graduated. And uh, in 2003, I was like, I should probably do something with my degree, which happened to be in recreation. So the BoEC was an obvious choice. Um, and I, you know, skied into an interview to become a summer intern, hopefully. Thank God I got hired. Um, I had no idea that 20 years later I would be the Wilderness Program Director. So um, I've, I've seen a lot of really great changes and awesomeness here at the BoEC. And I love to tell our staff and remind them that, you know, when I was an intern, everything with a roll of duct tape and a pool noodle. Um, you know, we've got amazing stuff. We have heat in the intern cabin, also an upgrade that was amazing and, and well received.
And after the electricity.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I wanted to tell you a little bit about the use of the area and what the Wilderness Program is doing up there. So in my time here alone, we went from three to four courses a month to now we're doing four to seven courses in a day. Someone starting, someone finishing, someone pre-coursing, post-coursing, going in, en route in Breckenridge, in Buena Vista, in Utah, all these great places and everything. But um 1,600 students um is an average of students that we would see come to Breckenridge to do those courses. And they all start at the Griffith Lodge. So they're all coming up to the, the F and D Plaza. We're doing um as many as 70 courses in a summer. And so that means that we have 12 interns currently um that we hire each summer. Um, and as many as 12 field staff that are working each program to make sure that our students stay safe and that they, you know, achieve all their hopes and dreams. And you know, have wonderful outdoor adventures. Some of the other things that we've seen up at the site is, you know, we went from just a few handfuls of people throughout the day when I first started there to now. Um, we counted one day and we counted over 400 visitors to the reservoir um from the public, which was amazing. It's so great to have that coverage and to meet the public and that sort of thing. And they're all curious about what we're doing and that sort of thing. You know, with that, um, it added some problems and challenges with trying to denote where we are and where they should be and that sort of thing. So like Sonia said, we invested already in ways to, to help delineate those areas of that exclusive use, which was a $30 investment in our fencing and the gate and that more signage so that people know where to go and where to um enjoy those spaces.
$30,000.
Yeah. I have a rec degree. I don't do. Um, so you know, on a given day, we have 50 to 70 BoEC staff, volunteers, students, caregivers, et cetera, coming and going up at the site there. You know, another really cool factor is that 30%, 37% roughly of all the groups that have been coming to the BoEC have been coming for 20 years or more. So it's really amazing that people keep coming back to this beautiful space to have these outdoor adventures um in an environment that we can create and curate. in an environment that we can create, curate, to be really safe and, and, and fun for these folks. So obviously, there's a lot going on up there. You know, when we started our strategic plan earlier this year, Sonya and the board made a big mistake and asked me what I would do with that, with that space. And I immediately came up with an eight hundred thousand dollar rope score stream. It's be twice as big. It'll have three entrances. It's gonna have a longer zip line. So all those amazing things that I'm pretty excited about. So hopefully, you like what we're saying today. You know, we really quickly noticed that, you know, the fencing and the gate and all these things are getting us into a place where we can update a lot, lot of the rest of the facilities that we have on that property. You know, I wanna just, you know, remind everyone that this is all within the already established exclusive use areas. So this is not anything that's going to be necessarily bigger or anything like that. So with Norris Designs' help, we have a lovely poster board, as well as, I think it's in your packets, the map of the site. And I kinda wanted to tell you a little bit about some of the dreams that we have in the vision for that particular site. It's, it's color coded. And so one of the first areas that I wanted to point out is on the very top, there's a blue dotted line. It's kinda going around the site and what, the blue dotted line is the, the trails that are up there, the one on the very top. The one on the very top that's by the snowflake lift. That is one of our first priorities if we make this all happen. And that is a new trail that we're proposing. Obviously, town of Brex are really excited, open space and Trails is excited about it already. They've come up to look at it. And what that's going to do is offer public, a very straight line access to the reservoir. And I think that that is obviously a important thing to keeping the public going in the right directions and the flow and everything of that site. With four hundred visitors, you gotta keep them moving somewhere.
In our packet, we're looking at the, the second graphic.
They're both exactly the same.
The second one doesn't have, it says, one has kind of a designation for public parking and the second one doesn't. Is that just a mislabeling?
Yes.
Have different labels.
Yeah, they have slightly different labels and slightly different graphics.
The first page is the site plan. And then the second page is just adding character imagery.
So this one shows public parking.
Yeah.
And the other side, the other one doesn't. So the, the other one shows the public parking. So we can put that one up.
Jamie, is that trail wheelchair friendly trail? It will be. All the rest of the trails are currently wheelchair friendly. And so this trail that we're proposing, again, it's just a straighter shot. It's a shorter walk for some of our folks that maybe don't have the endurance to go that far. Wheelchair friendly or than the current trail system. And it'll be super awesome. So we're hopeful that that's gonna work out. First and foremost, as we kinda get into what our hopes and dreams are there. The next area is what everyone is obviously talking about is our housing and parking areas for our staff and interns. Like I said, we have fifty to seventy people going up there a day for just our programming. And so having expanded parking, expanding the possibility for more interns so that we could serve more clients and do really cool stuff like that, it's gonna be fantastic. And that is the area that is kind of an orange color. If you can see it there, the beautiful orange blob.
Vision also includes some employee housing, as we've done with the Wellington Building. That was a game changer for us in terms of our operations and having the bedrooms upstairs on the third floor. So that's a critical component as well to the housing element.
Absolutely. The next really great, my favorite blob is the ropes course area and it's yellow in our maps here. And that is basically where the existing ropes course is. And it's just expanded just a touch so that we can use our geography to our, to our advantage and have more wheelchair straight access to the ropes course and back and that sort of thing. And like, you know, I said that twenty percent or thirty-seven percent of our students have been coming for twenty years or more. It would be really awesome to have new events and new opportunities for them to challenge themselves and everything. The climbing wall is currently in the middle of our parking lot and we intend to move that down by where the ropes course is. So that gives us a little bit more area to work with parking, housing, all of the greatness there. And then we also have added an activity field. We're lovingly referring to it as Bob's Field of Dreams, as it was one of his brilliant ideas. And I think it's fabulous because again, that opens us up to different programming that we can do with students. You know, right now, we're not really doing any team sports or anything like that, but this is something that we could go into. This could, you know, open archery as an opportunity, all sorts of different activities that can come about when you have a nice flat space that a wheelchair can roll around in and that most students can ambulate around in pretty safely. And so those are kind of the big, you know, big picture bubble ideas and everything that we have been thinking and dreaming about. You know, and the next steps for that are obviously going to be securing a few things, one of which is trying to decide prioritizing on this, you know, very ambitious plan. What do we need to do first? What are we most excited about? What's gonna be the most benefit and bang for our buck for us as well as the public in using that awesome open space? And so obviously, that trail is number one in my mind. And then from there, we have to decide what other things. I'm really hoping for the ropes course for number two, but we will have to assess which way to attack this plan as it is, as you can see ambitious. We have to, you know, get those priorities outlined, figure out what the plan of attack is. And then of course, coming up with the costs. You know, depending on how this all goes with everyone here, we can start working towards a capital campaign. It's gonna help us raise the funding to be able to do those amazing things up there at the site. So that's all I had for this part of it. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Bob Gregory. If you don't know him already, he's one of the most amazing intern class members of two thousand and three, just saying. And he's also a current board member. He's going to tell you a little bit about what this means as far as the lease and what our ask is.
Hey, everybody. Sorry I'm not there. I, my, my family is on our, on a massive Midwestern road trip right now. And if you've ever gotten a chance to drive across Kansas, Missouri, and Illinois and Indiana, I encourage you to think about flying next time. I, I, I really appreciate the opportunity anytime I get, I get the chance to talk about the B O E C and how amazing it is and what it means to me. I know we're probably preaching the choir. You guys know plenty about it already, but I, I, I think it's worth it for me to express my own personal experience with the B O E C. I came, I came to Breckenridge because of the B O E C. I basically stayed here because of the B O E C. I feel like this organization is the heart and soul of this community, and I can't really imagine this community without it, to be honest. I was an intern in the summer of two thousand and three and was a course director following that. I was an intern with Jamie, actually. And the, I will say, if you haven't been in the intern cabin in a while, the intern cabin pretty much looks the same as it did twenty years ago. So you know, you can, you can see for yourself why we're having this conversation, why we've been talking about, you know, through our strategic planning process, how there are things we need to do to actually be thinking about the, the future and make sure that we are able to secure the, the long term vision that we really need to make this organization, organization continue to thrive the way it has for the last several decades. And I'm sure you're, you're all aware of that. It has been, I, I'm here to talk a little bit about the lease, the lease itself and to kind of educate you all to the extent you're not fully aware of what the existing lease looks like and what we're actually asking for here. But it's, it's, it has been really fun kind of looking at the historic evolution of this relationship between the B O E C and the town of Breckenridge. It's, it's fascinating to me that the B O E C is, is certainly a beneficiary of some, some foresight, some generosity and just buy-in that, you know, a lot of early partners had in, in the vision that Jean Dayton and Aristotle Lee's and the other founders of the B O E C had at a time when they were willing to ask for it. And because of that, you know, that trust that, that the town has put into the B O E C, the B O E C has never let the town down. And it, things, things have evolved and continue to grow. And those five year leases, we realized we need twenty-five. And now here we are, we're asking for an extension. Just to give you a little bit of a snapshot of what, what's currently happening in the leases with the town of Breckenridge, the B O E C does have two primary long term leases. As you know, we've talked about the admin building. We're not really here to talk to you about that lease specifically. But we can't really talk about the, the, the lease for the wilderness site without, without considering the, the lease for the admin building as well. Both of these leases were recently extended in two thousand and thirteen. And I wasn't involved in the conversations back in two thousand and thirteen, so I'm not exactly sure why this was, decisions were made. But the admin building has a fifty year lease term. The wilderness site lease is for a twenty-five year term. So currently, the, the admin building, the Wellington Building lease expires June thirtieth, two thousand and sixty-three. The wilderness site lease expires September thirtieth, two thousand and thirty-eight. And, you know, of course, for the, the types of things that we're, we're talking about, the wilderness site, sixteen years just isn't quite long enough for us to be beginning conversations with the town even about certain things that we wanna do improvements that we wanna make. If we wanna put eight hundred thousand dollars into the ropes course, we need to make sure that we're actually preserving the opportunity to use it for longer than, than the period we have left. So couple of things about the admin building lease. As, as I mentioned, is a fifty year lease. There is, one of the reasons why we feel like we need to have the conversation now is there is an option to purchase the land and the building at the admin site. So on the Wellington Building, that lease does have an option to purchase in it. The original was gonna expire, expire in two thousand and eighteen. That was extended. And that option to purchase expires June twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three. So coming up, there is a deadline for that, for that option to purchase to be exercised. My understanding in our conversations with, with the town, the town is not interested in being in a position of selling any of its land. And fortunately, we are, we're kind of in a position where we're happy with the situation we have now. And as, as part of this ask, we're gonna be talking about, you know, foregoing that option of purchase. So really, this is about the wilderness site lease. And at the end of the day, the B O E C is looking for the town to extend its, to extend its lease on the wilderness site for seventy-five years. There are a couple of different ways that a lease could look based on that length of term. Our preference would be a seventy-five year lease. There's certainly the opportunity to do a fifty year lease with a twenty-five year option, but I think and some of the conversations we've had with town staff, it seems the best thing to do to actually approach that, that length of time is to include a provision in the lease that, that isn't in the current lease. There's, there's kind of, the, the spirit of this provision is, is in the existing lease, but the B O E C would be confident, happy to include a provision in, in a long term lease with the town that at, if, if at any point during the term of the lease, the B O E C is not honoring and satisfying its mission as it exists today, and, you know, doesn't substantially change, that at that point in time, the town could consider providing notice. I would prefer notice and an opportunity to cure, but basically notice that the, the B O E C is no longer serving its mission. And that, that would essentially be the only termination option that I would, that I would see necessary in the lease of that term. But ultimately, that's kind of the concept that we're asking for with the town. To me, it doesn't make sense. The B O E C doesn't, isn't, isn't gonna function, it isn't gonna thrive if it doesn't have these two facilities. They're both equally important and they can't be, the other can't be ignored. So while we're talking about an additional seventy-five years on the wilderness site, I think it makes the most sense conceptually to make the leases run concurrent, make the lease with the, the admin building and the wilderness site run concurrent. So, you know, I, I think it's, I think it's best to consider looking at both of them at the same time and at the same time. At the time that we're extending that lease, we would obviously, you know, forego our right, our option to purchase that wilderness or the, the admin building site. So that's what we're looking for. That's, that's why we're having this conversation. We're happy to answer any questions that you guys have specifically about the lease or about any of the, the ideas that we have with respect to the wilderness site. And really appreciate all your, all your time and energy and support you guys have given our awesome organization over the years.
Questions? Who, um, who does, who plows for you guys? Who plow, I know who plows the, the public parking and who plows the intern housing parking?
So the town of Breckenridge takes care of the lower parking lot for the public side. For the most part, we usually do some cleanup because there's usually people there. So as soon as someone moves, we'll clean it up with our own plow. We have hired Mountain Top Enterprises, which is a private company to plow the rest of the B O E C program area as well as the Wellington site.
And on, on the, in, the intern housing, are you guys expanding that or just kind of spiffing it out?
Well, a little bit of both. We would love to expand it. We'd love to host more interns. Currently, we host in the winter, we're having fifteen interns. And that means three of them that are dedicated to the Keystone Ski Office. And presently, they are housed in Wellington. It's a different experience for those three interns. So we'd love to have them all together in the same house. The current house has twelve beds in it. And so obviously, we'd like to improve that. We'd like to not have quite as many triple bedrooms. So as we've all learned with our latest pandemic, that one goes down, they all go down if you have this really tight community living situation. So we're hoping to spiff it up. I mean, I don't know what they're complaining about. They have heat, but you know, just make that a more modern facility that is more energy efficient, all of the things that, you know, you would do with a new building.
Can you talk about some of your other satellite operations down in Buena Vista and out of state? How did, does that work under the same umbrella? And is it just like, what's the mission in, in the expansion there?
So we have permits to go on adventures in all of those places. So we're permitted to the Roaring Gorge Field Office to do rock climbing down at Turtle Rock in Buena Vista. And then in Utah, where we have permits on Labyrinth Canyon of the Green River, as well as the San Rafael Swell. And so just all sorts of areas all over western Colorado as well as Utah, parts of Utah. And those trips are for folks that are a little bit more adventurous and don't necessarily need that accessible facility in order to have that adventure. And so we take a lot of veterans out into those more remote areas, lots of kiddos, folks like that. But we, I mean, just this summer, we took a young gal who was a quadriplegic down Ruby Horse Thief on a three night camping trip down there. So, you know, with, you know, that duct tape and that pool noodle, you can really get a lot done. So as far as expanding those areas, you know, starting with the site, because that's where all of those start. Everyone comes to the B O E C, gets outfitted, and then we go off to those areas. It's gonna just facilitate a quicker process for that. It's gonna allow us to do, I think, more programming of that nature to go out further and do those things. And that's gonna, you know, with all of these improvements and everything, I think it opens us up for the possibility of applying for more permits to use new and different areas.
Thank you so much. Other questions? Sixteen hundred wilderness days?
That's the number of students that we have seen through.
Days it would be.
So program days just for wilderness. That sixteen hundred summer was forty-five hundred user days.
You make it sound so easy.
I've had a little practice.
But it's not. The work you guys put into that and the work that comes out of it is absolutely incredible. So, um, and I don't know what the interns are whining about. I remember back in the day, they'd take a crappy old snowmobile up to the, up to the, to the cabin. So the, the provisions, and maybe this is for Bob, the, the provisions, the termination provisions you talked about. You know, I talked to Sonya some about that. I, I mean, I'm conceptually in favor of the long lease myself. I would just want some checkpoints along the way. You know, I, I have full trust this, the current leadership of the organization in the current leadership of the organization for sure. But we never know twenty years from now, thirty years, fifty years, whatever. You know, is that leadership can be as strong or are they gonna be going in the same direction? You know, is that leadership can be as strong or are they going to be going in the same direction? So for me, you know, conceptually, the longer lease, I, I get it. You need it for capital, um, for a capital campaign, but, um, I would want checkpoints where the town would get the land back. If, if the, if the, uh, the mission and the work of the B O E C. And, and we need to envision what that might look like in, in years to come, but generally the work of the B O E C continues because that's, that's really why, um, I think talent historically has supported, um, this gem of a piece of property to the organization. And why I would want to going forward. So having those checkpoints every 20 years or whatever the right number is, that, uh, gives the town an opportunity to take a look at the organization, ensure that it's still doing the great work that it does today. We check that box, we move on. Um, if there's questions, then we have a process to, uh, to take a look at it. And if, uh, there seems no path forward to, to correct it, then, then the town could take the land back. So for me, that's, that's the one piece. And is that, is that, did I describe that as you, as you envisioned it, Bob?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's similar to, um, to what I was proposing. I mean, I, I think the idea is that, yeah, I mean, uh, if at any time the town doesn't feel that the, uh, that the B O E C is providing the benefit to the community that it currently does by, by serving its mission and serving the populations that it currently does, um, or, or not in the same manner, uh, the town should have an opportunity, uh, to, and, and again, I envision, I guess it's something I can talk, uh, but we, we can talk to Kirsten about as far as what the language it looks like, but uh, I think through that process, there should be an opportunity for notice and an opportunity to, you know, for the town to provide notice and, and an opportunity for the B O E C to, to cure it. If there is something the B O E C is doing that can be corrected, if not, you know, the town would have the opportunity to terminate the lease. And if, you know, uh, at any, at any point, if the town terminated lease, the land does go back to the town. I think there's some, would have to be some provisions to figure out. You know what happens to the facilities, um, the Griffith, uh, the intern cabinet, any other, any other improvements that are on that property. That's the only thing that we need to be worked out, but conceptually, yeah, it doesn't, that doesn't make me uncomfortable. And it does seem like the best way to make sure that we kind of, you know, uh, 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 address that scenario that let's face it, I, I believe is pretty unlikely. But it, it kind of points out the, um, I, to your point, I feel like this has been a bit of a win-win. Um, relationship over the years. I do think the B O E C is an excellent steward for this property. Um, I think it provides an incredible benefit to the town. And I also think that, um, it's provided enough. We, we've been doing a good job working with the town the last couple of years, making sure that we provide a better experience for the, for the public also that uses the, uh, non-exclusive use area, but, um, I, I think that if, if I'm the town, that's probably the most important thing that, um, at any point in time you can do it. I don't, yeah, I don't know what the right time, timeframe is. Um, the current leases, I think it's, it's interesting, those current, the current leases actually both have provisions in it that say that on at least an annual basis, the town and the B O E C should get together and talk about whether or not the leases need to be amended for any reason. And it's kind of, uh, loose, uh, flowery language, but, um, that, that, that's essentially the concept you're talking about anyway.
It's not uncommon for us to, you know, have prepare language in these documents that addresses in the termination clause and, and what it could, what it could be terminated for, and also to give opportunities to correct. So I think, you know, really what, I think what we're looking for from the council, uh, on this one is, you know, do we do, do we do a seven, do we combine these both into one? Do we do a 75 year or do we do a 50 year with, with an option to renew for 25? Um, which I would probably lean towards on there just for some of the reasons even like Dick has talked about. And, uh, and then let, uh, and, uh, let us then work, you know, on the language, uh, with Kirsten and I and, and Bob and, and come up with something I think that allows us to, you know, get a new lease in front of you for adoption.
Excellent. How's everybody feel about that? And let me know, 75 or 50 and 25?
I like the 75. I like doing them concurrent. Big fan of the mission and the work. And yeah, not a bigger fan, so.
I'm probably more comfortable with the 50 and 25. Um, I'm fine with concurrent. I wouldn't want to make it hard to renew the 25. I would want to make that pretty easy, but it, it gives a real solid checkpoint to make sure that the land is being used for what we want it to.
I like the 75, um, for as much of a reason as, you know, their leadership is going to change, but our leadership is also going to change. So I'd like to provide that assurance for sure. I'd like to provide, and I think if we have the provisions built in, then there's no need to have a hard 50-year provision. And also I just, I think it's really getting more and more rare to have an organization that is very, you know, not your, your main primary mission set aside, but so willing to, um, provide space for our public to go into. And there aren't a ton of things that I suggest, you know, family, friends do, but we always go up to the B O E C lake. And so I just wanted to say thank you for that partnership up there. Cause that really is the center, heart of Breckenridge. You know, it's, it's such a gateway to the mountain and our town. And it's just really great that we know we can be a partnership up there and have use of that area.
That there Kelly, because that, that's important for, for my staff perspective to, that we continue to work closely with them on how we allow for public access in those areas, yet still create what they need in order to operate. So.
Yeah, I, I agree with Kelly. I'll, I'll be okay with 75 concurrent. And with the checks and balances that, um, that Bob and, and Kirsten will work out and hopefully, um, Bob will get paid by the hour. A little windy in the Midwest. Um, and, uh, you know, I was, I was part of the, uh, uh, privy to some of the early conversations between Dayton Sophocles and Randy Collins, who was an unsung hero in the whole B O E C like that guy was on the board. Um, it's an, it's an amazing organization. So many interns, uh, came here to be an intern and ended up being a prosecuting attorney. So, uh, I'm all for it and whatever we could do to make it work, but I do, I think the checks and balances, which, uh, the, the lawyers will work out. Carol?
Yeah, I agree. The B O E C is an institution. I think so many community members either volunteered or have a family member participate. There's so many connections to the community. So I think we should give that certainty of 75 years with those provisions that we can just check in in case things change. So thank you.
Okay. And a rare instance, I agree with Kelly and the fact that everything that she said, um, you know, the 75 years for both concurrent, the fact of that, the amount of time and effort you spend to making sure that the public has their area, that perimeter fence is beautiful, protects you and the public. I just, I couldn't be a bigger fan of your mission and what you do. And I think it's important to make sure that that runs in perpetuity. You know, 40 councils from here, so.
Uh, I agree. I just want to make sure that the public trail access is protected in the lease. And I do like, um, Bob's at any time as opposed to your every 20 years for, uh, or, you know, things can go off the rails quickly. Any organization, including a town council, and I think it's important that there is opportunity to ask for cure at any point if in 15 years, things are going askew and the B O E C is changing its message or its mission without, you know, once we're all gone. So, yeah, with that, um, 75 is fine if we have those assurances.
All right. Thank you.
And I'm happy to join the 75.
Like a plant up here. Oh, we used to be on the board. Wow. Oh, you should be accused.
25, but I'm fine to join the 75. And although the public use, I worry when I heard all the cocky kids were up there shoveling leg during COVID. I tell you, it's like, God bless you guys for putting up with that.
What is the density situation for housing up there?
We had to, you, you, you guys had to transfer 11 units to the Wellington site. Um, I, I don't know what the density, um, situation.
That should probably, what was it? So what's, is there anything left or is that used with the?
Pillows.
This figured out before we enter into the lease, because if you're going to need density from
Put it in.
The town, I'd like to put it in the lease. So there is no discussion with a later council at a later point, if you get around to pushing that piece off.
And they may not know yet because you have finalized plans.
But that is guaranteed that there's a certain amount of density that the town will give you as part of this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Vacation.
Yeah. Nice filters. You look like Kerry Lake.
I knew you'd say that, Jeffrey.
All right. Black History Month banner memo. Does anybody have questions on this?
We handed out an update there in front of you on the piece of paper. Uh, there was a meeting yesterday morning, and so there's some updated stuff that you all have in front of you. And, uh, yeah, we're going to catch up on some time, but Brooke, you want to do a quick little intro to that?
Yeah. Hi. Um, so basically a little bit of background is that a subcommittee of the commission and I came together and we created these banners, a couple of different types of banners. And then we went through a couple of different rounds of edits. And this is kind of what we ended up with from yesterday. So a few things to highlight is we wanted to highlight Barney Ford. He's local, that kind of thing. So we did the celebrate Barney Ford Day on February 1st. Um, and then another thing that Carol kind of brought to my attention is to add in another, um, historical figure and particularly Perry Tubman. So that's something if you guys are interested in, we'll bring that back to the commission, make sure they're okay with that and move forward with that. Um, as far as questions about how the commission feels, why we chose certain things, I know Carol has some background on that. So if she's going to have anything on that, she can answer some of that.
And maybe Brooke, it might be helpful, um, to explain how the banners work. So these are iterations that are going to be repeated. How many times are they repeated about?
So these are like all of the banners that will be up on the side of the road. Um, and this is ideally the layout that it will be, um, which is kind of why we chose to only do four figures to kind of not make it too much when someone's driving past. Um, and then that's also kind of why we have the bookends to kind of close it out and, um, start it. Yeah, I'm trying to think of like another way to explain it, but.
Yeah, no, I think that's helpful. And the commissioners did feel strongly about this. Um, what the commission has done is broken up into subgroups and based on the goals, this goal was the celebration of diversity and really wanting to highlight Black History Month. Um, the commissioners felt strong about the artwork, how this looks aesthetically. There's full commission buy-in. Um, also they wanted these bold colors and more than just the banners. There's a couple of things that the commission will bring to council. For example, Barney Ford Day last year was a one-time proclamation by the governor for his 200th birthday. The commissioner, commissioners feel strongly about bringing it back to council on an annual basis for a proclamation. And in addition to that, I think there's certain social media strategies along highlighting the month passed.
Questions?
That's not part of this anymore.
Okay. Everybody good? Thumbs up, thumbs up all around? All right. Make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, recommendations for Social Equity Commission. We have, uh, June Walters. Do you have anything to add to that?
We had almost 10 applicants. All of them were incredible. All of them, um, expressed interest to continuing to be involved in the commission. And we're seeing there's certain ways we can do that. Um, but it was a hard decision. We had fantastic applicants. Brooke did a great job pushing this out. And I mean, that's why we got so many applicants.
Did a great job of vetting out those applicants.
It was.
Several meetings over a long period of time. So.
It was not easy to narrow it down to June, but she's an incredible candidate. Um, deep ties to the community for decades, a strong knowledge of history and brings her own lived experience. So she was able to join in um, yesterday and unofficially and contributed tremendously already.
Everybody okay with this?
Yeah.
All right.
And there so under tonight, under the regular meeting.
Yeah, I get that motion ready. I, I worked with Kirsten on it this afternoon. Yeah. Okay, we have an executive set. Oh no, first notice of administrative rulemaking. Anything to add to the memo?
I so noticed. Um, just really quickly, this is, um, titled Public Works Administrative Rules and Regs, and it does cover three different aspects of what we're working on. The, 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 the last piece was disposable bags, which we already had admin rules for. This is just consolidating them into one document. Um, and then the other two are related to pay as you throw universal recycling and some of the details and enforcement of that. And then the other one is establishing formally the materials management program that we just discussed along with the fee. Um, which is the ordinance you'll see tonight.
Questions? All right.
About, um, there's not much about the universal recycling ordinance. Will that be an amendment or an update later?
So the universal recycling, um, is included in here. Um, if you're looking on page 108 of your packet, which is page two of the rules and regs, um, it's the commercial recycling container requirement and the, and the, uh, there's a example in there.
Okay, yeah.
Um, so that, so it is addressed in here, but what we didn't do is duplicate anything that was already in the ordinance. So if it was covered in the ordinance, it's in code. If it needed elaborated or further implementation rules, it's included in the rules and regs.
Got it. Thank you.
Anything else? Everybody good with this? Okay. We're going to take five minutes.
Before we do, I want to get on record that we had, uh, stated that we had three items that we were going to do in an exec session. I have two of those dealing with personnel matters, uh, and one for a consultation with town attorney, but we will not need to do, uh, a, a third one and for reference, uh, consultation with town attorney over legal matters. So we will only have two items and we'll have the, uh, motion for that when we get back.
Five minute break. We need your consultation.
Wow.
Who are we missing?
Oh, again. It smells also.
Who's going to read the motion? We moved that the town council go in an executive session under CRS subsection 4 F I to discuss personnel matters and conduct an annual employment review. The town manager. Take the vote first. Okay.
Second?
Roll call please.
Do roll call. Mayor Mamula?
Yes.
Boatem Owens? Councilmember Beckman? Councilmember Bergeron, councilmember Carlson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sade?
And I moved it to town council go and do an executive. And I moved that the town council go into an executive session under CRS subsection 4F.I. Or one, to discuss personnel matters and conduct an annual employment review of the town attorney. Second, someone?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes.
Portem Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron? Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sade?
All right. Just a little. Thank you. The time is now 6:01 PM. The executive session has been concluded. The town council has conducted the annual employment review, town manager and the town attorney. Council will now move forward in taking formal action on the matters of salary and/or merit increases on these two council employees. So you can start with a motion that sounds something like, I move that council approve Rick Holman to the town manager with.
All right. Is that how we'll start, and then we'll have a discussion?
We can start it that way, and then we can discuss salary and merit. You can do, well, I'll tell you what, why don't you just throw out what you're, somebody throw out what they're thinking on, let's have a discussion that way first.
You know, Rick educated us that he and Shannon and Kirsten did not take the $2 bump that we did earlier for all of staff, nor did they take the $3 bump that we most recently did that will take effect January 1st. I propose that, obviously, we, Shannon's Rick's employee, so we can't do anything for her, but we can suggest that he, you know, give her the $2 bump. But I would like to see Rick get the $2 bump, the $3 bump. We can make them effective January 1 or whenever it seems to make most sense. Obviously, the three will start then, but start the two whenever we can start two right away. And then a 5% merit. So $5 bump, timing of which, do we need a specified timing, or can you? It's really the first pay period for 2023, which starts December 17. So a $5 equivalent of a $5 bump and a 5% merit.
Okay, how's everybody feel about that? I mean, any other discussion on that?
So just to clarify, it would be, the $5 bump would be effective the first pay period, which would be December 17. The merit would be effective on the anniversary of January 2nd. $3 you get when the rest of the staff gets it. That's December 17. Okay, perfect. Yeah, so five on December 17th and, yeah, the merit. What you said.
Does that part have to be in the motion? Okay, so I move the council approve Rick Holman for the town manager.
Second.
There's a motion and a second roll call?
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Yes.
Rankin?
Yes. Yes. Okay, salary and/or merit for town attorney.
I move, we pretty much do the same thing for Kirsten that we did with Rick, 5% merit increase in the five hour per hour, the same type.
A dollar per hour.
Yeah.
Is everybody? Any discussion on that? Okay, I move the town council approve Kirsten Crawford for the town attorney.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Carlton? Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Beckerman? Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. All right, and with that, we are concluded until tonight.
We are.
Let's tell the order of the town council regular meeting for Tuesday, November 22, 2022. It is 7:00 PM. We begin with roll call, please.
Ms. Owens?
Here.
Mr. Carlton?
Here.
Mr. Bergeron?
Here.
Ms. Sade?
Here.
Mr. Beckerman?
Present.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes.
We have approval of the minutes for November 8, 2022. Does anybody have anything they want to talk? No, minute stand as presented. Agenda, Rick?
We would like to add a new item to the agenda, so change to the agenda under new business other. I have number two, it would be a proclamation in support of the victims of Colorado Springs shooting.
Right. Everybody okay with that? Agenda stands as edited with communications council. We begin with public comments. These are non-agenda items only. You have a three-minute time limit, please. And if you'd like to say something, please stand up at the lectern, tell us your name, and take your three minutes. Anyone? Anyone? Yep, go, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Ludmilla Babayko, and I have been resident of our town since January 2021. And I'm here to ask for help. Actually, it's very hard for me, just I have very difficult situation. And plus, English is my second language, so I make my thoughts on paper, and I would like to give you to read. I hope it will be about not more than three minutes, if you let me, please.
Go ahead. Oh, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Were you gonna read that?
Are you gonna read it, or?
You want the council to read it?
I can, but probably it would be better if somebody reads, just because I afraid I have strong accent. And.
We could take a quick minute, read this.
Give them a minute to read it. If they have a question for you, then they can ask a question.
Yeah, would be great. Can I sit?
Just hang out just a second, okay? Thank you.
Okay, anything you'd like to add to this?
Me? No, I would like just to ask, not to add, so.
So you're asking us for?
A short-term license, even for a short time of period, maybe just for a year. It will be enough for me to decide all my question issues.
Okay, we usually don't during open session talk about these stuff, so we will talk about it then, and we'll let you know.
I know you need some time, just because it's not easy what I'm asking for, but I, okay, I will be waiting. Thanks so much.
Ludmilla, thank you very much.
Yeah, either myself or somebody else will follow up with you, okay? I have your number. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak this evening at public comments? All right, with that, public comment period is closed. BTO update, Lucy.
Good evening, everyone. With respect to what's happened in Colorado Springs, just so you know, the Colorado Tourism Office, and I think virtually all the DMOs in the state have decided to pause social media for the week, just to be quiet. And so that's what we're doing, and I'm really pleased that there's consideration for a proclamation from town. So thank you for that. So I will do a quick kind of lodging update, what business looks like the next few days. Actually, gonna do a little dog and pony show today, four slides, for some BLB branding we hope to do in town. And then I'll just do a quick events update at the end. So I learned tonight, just before I came over here, watched the news, and today is actually the busiest travel day for air in Denver. It typically is Wednesday and Sunday are the two big travel days, like really big ones for the year. But, you know, with remote work and everything, it's spreading out, so today is the single biggest day for DIA, which was surprising. And airlines across the board nationally are expecting the biggest Thanksgiving weekend since 2019. So it's, you know, people are back, a lot of pent-up demand. So specifically for Breckenridge, we're looking, our occupancy as of November 15th, for the four days. We, well, I'm sorry, we're looking through like Wednesday through Sunday. We didn't know about Tuesday. And we're about 10% behind where we were last year, but again, last year was a tidal wave coming in. So we're pretty comparable to 2019. So there will still be some fill. We know Colorado is still gonna fill, even though we're not marketing there, but pretty comparable to 19. Looking a little further ahead, Christmas is similar. It's about 12% down to 2021, and it's about flat to 1920. So I think, again, you know, we can expect that. And what's really interesting there is our ADRs are up quite a lot. They're up 11% year-over-year. They're up 47% compared to 2019. So revenue-wise, you know, it's, we're gonna be fine, we believe. So as of the end of October, when we look at room nights, which to us is the more important metric, we've got about 60% of the season is on the books by the end of October. And every month is close to or a little behind last year, except for the month of February is up. If you look at, when you see the EKG chart, which Bill's sending out tonight, we're behind almost on every day, except for that first week of January and also spring break. Everything else is a little softer. Some of that will fill, but will probably stay a little under year-over-year. And we still think that's good business for Breckenridge, given all the dynamics we're dealing with. We're doing, the DMX aggregate is doing a little bit better than that. Couple points, nothing major, but we've also had an increase in inventory, about 2%. And, you know, that may not be the case for all of the competitive set. But everybody's got higher ADRs and lighter occupancy, so, you know, it's what we've expected. So we're not shocked or concerned at this point about business looking forward. If we can go to the, Helen, if you wouldn't mind, just go and write to slide six. I'm not gonna take you through the agency stuff, or maybe go back one, please. Yeah, here. So Christine, our new CMO, and I met with the leadership team from the town a week ago and presented some ideas for what we could do in town for Be Like Breckenridge branding. And the idea here is, again, Be Like Breckenridge is our campaign to help guests be better guests in town. Just help them move around, help them know how we do things here. And what our goal is with doing this in town is if we can accomplish that and also accomplish some other goals that the town departments have, you know, kill two birds with one stone, that's what we want to do. So that, don't worry about the actual copy there. We haven't talked about that yet. But the idea is to take some of the lamp posts that already have the bars on them and put some Be Like Breckenridge banners on it. The first one would always be that, you know, the first one's sort of explaining what it is, and then we'd have a couple of key messages behind that. And we could change those depending on the season. We could change those depending on what the issue is that we have in the community. I mean, we wouldn't get too crazy with changing them out all the time, but we have a lot of flexibility with this. So this, the banner idea, not on every lamp post, but just some key ones. And we'll start small and go slow, make sure it's received okay, people understand what we're doing. And if it's positive, you know, we can expand it. So this was one idea we would like to pursue. Next slide, Helen. We looked at the parking garage. This was another one that, again, collectively, we thought maybe had some legs. We know in the parking structure, you know, there's a lot of questions when people pull in there, they don't really know where to go, what to do. You know, it's, there's an opportunity for some kind of guest service messaging. We thought the green was a little too much for like something that large, so we can do it in brown, can be green. You know, this is all just ideas. So again, this would be more welcoming messages and kind of introducing the concept of Be Like Breckenridge. And then inside the elevator, we'd have the opportunity for a little bit more. And we could mix that in with some, you know, directions for where the parking kiosks are, something like, you know, questions people have when they're in that building, because there is some confusion with some of our guests. We see it in the survey. So this one is, I know, Eric, this one's near and dear to your heart. This is, it's my priority as well. And, you know, the idea here is, you know, think about this, is maybe there's like one, you know, like the sign in the front with corrugated metal, and maybe that's got some BLB branding on it. And then all the other signage, you know, lives underneath that, and it, you know, it can be changed out. Like, we don't need the ice caution, ice sign up in July, you know, we can just, you know, move those things around a little bit. And Scott Reed was interested in, you know, working with us to put, you know, if we, we have the budget because we still have savings from COVID, so we can pay for some of this stuff. So if we can accomplish some things that the operating departments need to do as well with this, I mean, that's gonna be the projects we want to try first. So we have one or two more. So this was just, you know, rebranding the cases for the poop bags. And this one, we did not review with the leadership team. This is actually a history stake that is owned by the resort. And after we talked about this in our board meeting last week, Sarah LaCoco reached out and offered this to us. If we want to pay to put some BLB signage on it, it's ours to use. So we wanted to just, you know, make sure that you knew that we're, you know, thinking about this and working with the operating departments and hope that it's okay.
Questions?
Just an observation. I don't think that green is too much. You know, that a large green sign, it's.
In green? I mean, they were just showing us they can do the range, because there might be some places where it's like a little too much. If we like the green.
Things as well.
It'd wrap on those. That's what we had. We have a picture of it in green, but she didn't want to scare you guys off.
Yeah.
The tree's blue.
You know what she's talking about, right on both sides?
On the pillars. It's okay. I mean, from a marketing perspective, we prefer that, because then the color is the brand. But we want to be sensitive.
Even worth doing if you don't brand it all the same.
All right.
I'd like to see a Don't Let Her piece to this.
But I do think that, like, I love all these messaging examples, but like that one that says, do your part. I just like those ones that are just too.
Yeah, they're too.
Like what?
Yeah. Well, we want to think, we want to be really thoughtful and think about what is the person thinking about when they're in that space? So maybe the message in the parking structure is different from when they're on the street. Certainly different from the trail signage, so it won't be just some random thing. We want to be really thoughtful about what goes where and when and like that.
You know, in the parking structure, if you could somehow combine that walk message with leave your car here and walk to town. Matt would be psyched about that. Yeah, I mean, we're working on that now. That's a, that's a huge piece for us.
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely. I mean, that's what, you know, what we want, too.
Would it be worth looking at the shopping carts at city markets, you know, looking at your goal of, or Kelly's of eliminating bottled water and having a water message? I don't know if they would let you do it.
Well, it's a good idea, Jay. We can reach out and ask them. I know. I know years and years ago, when I was with the resort, we were able to have, you know, the, the little things that you put at the end of your groceries, that those bars, we were able to make little skis that everybody stole. But yeah, we, we can, I think that's a good idea because it gets local. I mean, it's really targeted to the guests, but we, you know, it's our residents and employees too. It's everybody. Hopefully there's a good idea somewhere in this for everyone.
Skateboarding is not a crime sign.
He took his hand out.
Just keep you posted on progress there. And then the last thing, just because it's coming up soon, December 3rd, we have the Santa race, which is going to be produced by the rec center. And that will start at four 20, because right before that, we have the Moose March, which will be the, the little kids. So that's what the hat is, cutest thing ever. Majay found these. And the dog parades at 2:30, lighting will be at, I, I love it. That's you.
For Santa race, isn't it? It's a different course for Santa race.
They're just starting it up closer to Riverwalk. Like we pulled it back further. Now we're going to bring it back up. It's really tough because you can't get the acoustics to work that well. So people know what's happening. So the thing that's different this year, the dog parade will be bigger. But the, we're going to include an adopt and adopt an angel toy drive. Rotary, Rotary is going to come in with Adopt an Angel. So from two to six in the Riverwalk Plaza, we'll have a toy drive. So we're really working towards trying to have some sort of philanthropy component with our events, wherever it's appropriate. Probably won't do one at Uller, but we thought is okay.
The end of Uller.
Lucy, how's that going to work at the Riverwalk for Adopt an Angel? Are they going to be?
They're, they're going to come in there with, you know, probably vans or trucks or something and people, and we'll have tables, just like we did. If you saw what we did at Oktoberfest, we did a food drive and Fer came in, they parked the van and our staff.
So you pick up the toys elsewhere and bring them to the Riverwalk.
Like if you just go to Walmart and buy something and bring it in, unwrapped, you know? And so we'll have a lot of advertising out for that. And then quickly, just looking a little further ahead for snow sculpture in January, we're getting ready to just set up a meeting with Parking and Transit. So we make sure all of that is ironed out. The Saturday reservations, we'll do again, that's live on our website now. We went ahead and just started it now. And Toyota, you know, we're moving forward with Toyota as our sponsor. They're, they've just been awesome. So that's what we have.
Lucy? I have a question. I had, and this may be misdirected, but I, I had a couple of emails on regarding the lighting of Breckenridge and the fact that prior to the lighting of Breckenridge, for example, Thanksgiving weekend, town looks very dark when you're entering in, that the Riverwalk looks very dark and uninviting. And this is, might be the only time this guest will come and that's their image. In your opinion, does it seem? Would it be reasonable to assume that the lay of Breckenridge wouldn't have the same impact if it was, if it was on from Thanksgiving on or prior to that? And then relit on December 4th versus waiting?
I think the question here would be closing the street, you know, for the Santa race. I mean, assuming that we did everything with it, it was just the lighting, that's okay. But the lighting is really a nice close for the Santa race, and I don't think the Santa race and Thanksgiving would.
No, of course. I think more the, the point is not having the event, just having it illuminated prior to the official lighting of rec.
Well, maybe we could do a teaser. I, I don't know. It's an operations thing too. You know what? We'll take that back and take it under consideration. It could be like a little preamble to the big lighting that happens.
Just Thanksgiving weekend, that's.
On right now, anyway, just not ours.
Yeah, we'll look at that. I don't disagree. So anything else? Thank you.
No one writes me emails. All right. That's because they know what you're going to say. Same with me. Thanks, Lucy. Okay, we have continued business. We start with second readings, Council Bill number 35. Series 2022, this is an ordinance setting the mill levy within the town of Breckenridge for 2023. Hello?
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, Pamela Nast, Revenue Manager, for the record. I'm here for the second reading of the ordinance setting the mill levy within the town of Breckenridge for 2023. Whereas the town council has determined that a mill levy of 5.07 mills upon each dollar of the assessed valuation of all taxable property within the town of Breckenridge is needed to balance the 2023 budget. This is for purpose of deferring the expenses of the General Fund of Breckenridge for the fiscal year of 2023. The town clerk is authorized and directed after adoption of the budget by the town council to certify to the Board of County Commissioners of Summit County, the tax levies for the town of Breckenridge. The ordinance shall be published and become effective as provided by section 5.9 of the Breckenridge Town Charter. And we are forecasting that with the 5.07 mill levy, it will result in property tax revenues of $3.7 million. Questions?
How long have we been doing 5.07 mills? Do you know? 20 years?
There was a period there. It was higher for a little while and then we, and we still have, we still have the ability to, I believe, right? To adjust it if we need to, but we've always kept it at five.
So this is not an increase at all?
Or at least.
Does it have to be earmarked for something? Or can you just do it for general fund? You have to, if you, and I'm not suggesting we raise it this year, but just future years, I'm just.
I seem to recall, I'd have to look. I seem to recall.
It was for something before.
That had a little bit of a sliding thing on it you could do.
I thought it was just, I thought it was for recreation to pay for the bond that we had originally on the golf course and ice rink.
Yeah, it might have been.
And I think, and at one point, there was some fuzzy math that did some increase for housing and childcare years and years ago. And then the next council decided that we should just lower it back to where it belongs and keep it there. So. All right. Any other questions?
It was changed in 2014, Tracy's selling us. So it's been, yeah.
Seems like it's been longer than that. Anyone in the public wish to comment on the non-increase in the mill levy for, for this year? No, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Second reading, move gas council bill number 35, series 2022, the title of which has been read into the record.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion from the council? No roll call, please, Helen.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Sade? Mr. Bergeron? Mr. Beckerman? Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. We have a second reading, council bill number 36, series 2022. This is a bill for an ordinance repealing policy for a pertaining to mass and making conforming amendments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Steffi Shrek, Planner Two, for the record. I'll be brief, but just for everyone in the public. So this is repeat, the second reading of the policy for our amendments, the mass bonus reduction, redaction from the code. So basically since, based on council's direction from the past few meetings, we're basically eliminating policy for A and for R, which is mass, since all interior square footage will now be counted as density. For clarity, the bill includes really long paragraphs of underlines. That's basically sections from policy four, which are now being moved to policy three. So this is the home size policy, exemptions for renewable energy, mechanical rooms, things like that. The only thing that is being changed in that section is the previous exemption for 900 square feet of garages. There are no additional changes for this, just some clarifying code language, but no changes in the intent. So shall this pass tonight? Staff is prepared to bring additional code changes like we've talked about. Historic district garages, things like that, the Wellington market rate carriage houses. That's something we can definitely bring in the future. So happy to take questions.
I mean, thanks for the hard work on this.
It's complicated section, so I know.
Questions for Steffi?
Steffi, have you gotten any calls or emails from people in the construction industry in town over this policy?
Not since we got two. They have been forwarded to you just regarding basically that 900 square foot exemption for garages. Some confusion on where the home limit maximums come from and thinking that is a new code change, which is not. So just a couple, just in the last day or two regarding that.
Thank you.
And then could you talk again about any impacts or how many things we think we'll see in the pipeline if we delay passing this, it likely wouldn't?
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to tell. Carol, thanks for the question. I know Mark talked earlier just regarding, we don't foresee anything really big. Obviously, when we first started, it was kind of the hotels, condos, inns and lodges. There's not really anything in the works for that. There are some single family that are in the works, which obviously if it was submitted today, it wouldn't affect them. So I don't foresee anything really big and not any really big projects submitted, submitting down the pipeline that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this? Second reading this evening. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move that we pass on second reading, council bill number 36, the title of which has been read into the record.
Second.
There is a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I am, I'm probably going to vote yes for this, knowing that we're going to come back quickly with some, some changes. As much as I, I'd rather not, I think. I think after thinking about Dick's concern for places like the Weiss Warren, it's probably, probably better to be safe than sorry, and we can work on those adjustments as we think about it more. I don't really like doing legislation this way, but.
I don't either.
But, but, so. Anyone else? All right. With that, roll call, please.
Ms. Sade? Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Owens? Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
No.
Mr. Beckerman?
No.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. All right. We have first reading of council bill number 37, series 2021. This is a bill for an ordinance establishing a regulatory fee in connection with the commercial materials management program. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Matt Holsey, Assistant Mobility Director. This is a material management fee ordinance establishing a fee schedule and criteria to recover administrative, operational and maintenance costs of the shared commercial enclosure program. In addition, staff has drafted administrative rules and regulations to accompany the ordinance and further clarify, clarify implementation procedures of the program. With that, I'm available for questions.
Matt, thank you. Questions? Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this first reading this evening? No? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, will we pass council bill number 37, series 2022, the title which has been read into the record?
Second. There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. All right, we have first reading, council bill number 38, series 2022. This is an ordinance amending chapter 13, pertaining to the process for Breckenridge special events in the Breckenridge Events Committee.
Mayor, Council, this is a bill that embeds the events committee into the municipal code. It is not a change in policy. It talks about the composition of the committee and the scope of their duties. There was a question at work session about whether the alternates meet the charter requirement for residency. And I did confirm with Shannon Haynes that they do. I neglected to mention in work session that we also have one other change in the bill that contemplates appeals through our new administrative hearing process. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Any questions for the town attorney? Now, anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, will we pass council bill number 38, series 2022, the title which has been read into the record?
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I am going to bring something up about events on other matters.
Okay.
So could someone remind me?
Yes. Let's see, Jeffrey, okay. All right. And with that, roll call.
Carlton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yeah.
Mr. Beckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Sade? Mayor Mamula?
Yes. All right, we have two resolutions this evening. The first resolution number 21, series 2022. This is resolution adopting the 2023 budget, making appropriations there for and approving the 2023-2027 capital improvement plan. Hello again.
Hello again, Mayor, Town Council. So linked to the memo was, is for the approval for the resolution of the 2023 budget document, as well as a 2023 to 2027 capital improvement plan. The 2023 budget, as you all know, is the first budget process with our new team. We developed it using the 2020 and 2021 actuals analysis, as well as our projections for 2022, based on 2022 budget as well. We did not assume any impact from COVID-19, as we have seen that both 21 and 22 have shown a return to normal business for the town. Major headwinds for 23 include economic uncertainty from increased inflation and mortgage interest rates, along with employment challenges due to workforce housing and compensation. Our revenue budget for 23 is based on 22 projections, along with analysis of 19 actuals. Again, due to the current economic uncertainty, we decided to reduce the revenue by 10% from our 22 projections. Even with this reduction, we are 25% higher than 19 for sales tax and 40% higher for accommodations tax, which this shows great growth compared to the initial period of contraction during the COVID-19 shutdown. Our expense projections for 23 budget reflect increases in spending levels that account for merit increases and pay adjustments made in order to remain competitive for staff, as well as a robust capital improvement plan. It's also worth to note that we've increased our personnel from 202 to 214. While we were not able to include the impact of the current compensation study, we will look at the data upon completion and come back with a budget appropriation as required. There is no blanket expense increase for inflation, and we did project expenses based on 22 spending and pricing. With that said, our final budget that has been submitted includes $125 million of revenue and expenditures is 139, which gives us a loss of 13 million. This was improved by $6 million from our meeting from October 25th, as we decreased the expenses in the housing fund. By decreasing these expenses, the loan from the X size was also decreased to fund the housing. For the capital improvement, we have $14 million for new projects for 2023, 6.8 from prior project carryovers that will be finished in 23, and as well as a restriction of three years for future projects of 48 million, totaling 69 million in the CIP. Do you have any questions?
Is it customary to, to budget for a loss?
Um.
Sorry.
That is fine. And I do know that you asked this last time as well, so. I don't know in government accounting, to be honest, but I will definitely get you an answer.
Thank you.
By tomorrow, I promise.
Okay, me. One of the things that we want to do for you, as you know, we had our meeting with Moody's for the COP, and they, and they do the rating. And we, you know, we were AA plus before, and I think that they feel like that we're still going to have a very good rating. But there are some specific formulas, and their formulas have changed when they look at revenue to debt ratios and different things like that. And so I want to, we just got that information and I really want to sit down with finance and understand. And, and that may be kind of a baseline barometer we want to look at when we're talking about that, that we want to make sure we stay, that we try to maintain that, that debt to revenue ratio and look at our spending to make sure that we're keeping ourselves positioned in, in a very high rating area for the town.
What's good about high rating?
Well, Moody's gives what, you know, ratings, and I don't know how to better describe it. Like a triple A, a double A rating.
Like a credit score, almost like a credit score. Individual. It'll affect your interest rates if you borrow. It can affect your insurance rates. It also is a, it's a baseline for, for prudent fiscal. it's a baseline for for prudent fiscal policy as well. It's one, there's multiple of them. But I I think that's a great approach, Rick.
So, I would, I would be concerned if year over year we were coming to you and doing that because it certainly wouldn't be just sustainable. But part of, I I think we've all said, you know, that we collect our tax revenue to be good stewards, but also to reinvest that money back into the community where there's capital projects or other things, the services that we deliver, et cetera. So the fact that we need the money to deliver X services or capital projects that we have going on, I think, you know, I I'm not concerned about the fact that we're dipping into our reserves a little bit, but and a lot of that's being driven by, you know, thirty plus million dollars in housing that we are doing right now.
Rick, does this actually dip into our reserves or is some of this carryover from um C I P projects that we didn't do and the money's carried over? Does that square up the cash flow? Um, negative? I don't know the answer, but it'd be an interesting question to ask.
I mean, we got, you know, we have very high reserve numbers.
Oh, I know.
That's why I think we're okay and um, you know, Tracy's weighing in too. But as she said, no.
We have a hundred and sixty two dollars in restricted. So those are all
Two dollars?
A hundred and sixty two.
Million.
Five hundred and thirty four. Three nineteen. Just in restrictions.
Millions, not dollars.
Millions.
Oh, okay.
In restrictions. So that brings your your general fund, like the whole fund bounds down to seventy two, but without those restrictions, you're at two hundred and thirty five. But we're just restricting all of these.
Practice too.
Right.
That's one of the reasons we get a high rating.
Impose too. That's a big deal.
Why we get a high rating.
Some of it self pose.
Some is self imposed, some is is policy from the state and the feds.
So we'll work through this. We'll fight, we're gonna figure it. We're gonna know what our new rating is in the next few weeks and then we'll we'll, you know, we'll sit down when we get a chance and we'll kind of understand what that benchmark could be and 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 talk to you next year about that.
Yeah.
And we, we, we still have a lot of questions, um, and we've just been waiting to sit down with our auditor, which will be shortly next week. So we've been, they've been still working through the past audit to get us cut off, but once we're caught up, we're, we've got a lot of questions and our auditor would be the person to ask as well. And so I think a lot of this will be cleared out here very soon.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Done a great job getting caught back up, rebuilding, et cetera. I really appreciate the work. I, we're not trying to ask hard questions. We're just, I I really appreciate the work.
Yeah, I wanted to echo what Dick said. I think the amount of work you guys have put in over the last five or six months and getting up to speed and understanding this budget is really incredible. So seems like you have a great team and we're happy to have you.
We do have a great team and um Tracy is currently working also on phasing this budget so that at some point in the future going forward, we can also provide more meaningful reporting in terms of expenses as well. Um, so once we have a a nice clean budget going for forward for twenty twenty three, um, that will help all of us understand exactly where we're standing on a monthly basis and that that's that's excellent.
Great. All right, with that, anyone in the audience like to comment on the budget and the C I P? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I've moved, we passed resolution number twenty one, series twenty twenty two, a resolution adopting the twenty twenty three budget and making appropriations there for and approving the twenty twenty three slash twenty twenty seven capital improvement plan.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Well, yep, Matt.
I'll just say, you know, I made this revolution, um, but uh I had to go in and had talked to Rick, have him talk me off the ledge. I hate that. I hate the sound of this. You know, like spending more money than we make, but so, but I I I trust the, you know, the the people that do this for a living. Um, that's, you know, finance is not my strength. As you know, it's more etiquette and decorum.
And foul language.
And, but yeah, so anyway, I I just putting an eye on, I think we need to keep an eye on it, and I know you guys are.
I, you know, Jeffrey, I think, I I think there's a, there's a philosophical question to ask yourself as a steward of the people's money. How much money do you hoard and how much money do you use for the public's benefit? And I think that's, I, you know, there, there are boards and commissions in this community that tend to hoard their money. And there are people that know about that and it really annoys them. You know, we collect tax money to use it for the public's benefit, not just to sit on it in case
To have it.
Just to have it or in case there's a, there's an emergency. Well, we just came through a huge emergency and we have to catch up with things like housing. So there are times when I think while it looks like you spend beyond your means, you're really not because that money is available. We're not borrowing on it. It's, it is there, so. There's my two cents. And with that, roll call, please.
Mr. Beckerman. Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
King, yes.
Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
Uh, we have a resolution number twenty two, this is series twenty twenty two. Resolution approving an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between the town of Breckenridge and Summit County, Colorado, to develop workforce housing on real property referred to as the Justice Center.
Laurie.
Evening. Um, uh, for the record, Lori Best, manager of uh Town and Breck Housing and Childcare. Um, this resolution will um enable us to execute a amended um I G A. We entered an I G A with the county back in January. Um, and since then, um, sort of the project has become more refined and we know more details about the projects than we knew back then. And there are kind of three areas where there was a change um that we wanted to reflect into um actually execute a new I G A that would reflect the current um project. Um, the three areas that really changed, um, uh, we did end up adding a small sliver of town owned property to the property that was originally owned fully just by the county. And so by expanding our site slightly, it changed what we had to do in terms of um what was spelled out in that original I G A. We had to now actually convey that property to the town and county as tenants in general are in common. Um, whereas uh when we were first starting out, it was the county that had to just convey half interest in the parcel they own. So that drove some changes to exhibit A and to section five of the original I G A. Um, the second item that changed a little bit is when we launched this prog- project, we, we thought we would each be bringing cash and then financing the balance with C O P. Um, since then, we decided to finance the bulk of this project with C O P um and then a slight um a two point five million dollar grant. Um, so changing the amount of the C B, or the C O P, we had to change section ten, which happened, had to which described the previous financing deal. Um, section eleven um is in the insurance section and um, you know, um, we found out as we went through the C O P process that the lender is going to require that the town who is um issuing the debt um hold the insurance policy instead of both the town and county. So we had to change that section as well. So that describes sort of the three major changes that drove us um doing an amended I G A. We recommend approval.
Excellent. Thank you, Lori. Any questions? You know, anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass resolution number twenty two, series twenty two, the title, title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Owens. Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, we have uh Breckenridge Social Equity Advisory Commission appointment. Carol? You handle this?
Yes, we are the, there was a subcommittee that went through the application process. We had um nine yeah, nine applications for one spot open on the commission, had incredible applicants and after
Hey, uh, excuse me. Lori?
Hey, Lori Best.
Who is the, the vote on Little Mountain?
Um, it was two to one. Elizabeth Lawrence was the lone um dissent um vote that um did not support um upholding the denial.
But she It was denied though.
It was denied, but it was um uh Tamara and Josh that voted to um support the Upper Blues denial.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, Carol.
On the record, who voted no? Um, so the um, the interviewing selection committee um is making the recommendation to appoint June Walters to council.
Excellent. Any questions for Carol?
I just heard just wonderful things about June Walters.
Oh, sweet.
Good choice.
That's a great appointment.
It was tough, but uh we're fortunate to have you.
All right, is there a motion?
I move we point, appoint June Walters to the Social Equity Commission.
For a three year term.
For a three year term.
Second.
Okay, I move we appoint June Walters to the Breckman Social Equi- Advisory Commission for a term of three years beginning December twenty twenty two.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, I'm going to read a proclamation about in support of the victims of Colorado Springs shooting. Before I do, do we want to talk about a donation from the town? Before we ask the citizens to donate through this proclamation?
I would like to.
Will be appropriate.
And is there an organization?
Uh, coloradagives.org, organization backslash C O Healing Fund.
That's how you do it.
Well, it's created by the
It's created by the governor's office.
Great.
What did we do for Boulder? Was it good?
Ten.
Ten?
That was a whole community.
No, I know. I mean, this is a community too. It's just not as broad a
So, I mean, there's a lot. They uh, it's collected about a hundred, looked like today around a hundred ninety seven thousand dollars and it's just a lot of fifty dollars, seventy five dollar people doing stuff, so.
Pretty awesome.
I mean, you know, if you wanted to do five thousand.
I think we should do five thousand.
Yeah. Anybody have a problem with it?
Are there victims?
It goes to support, uh, it got, it's helped administer through uh COBA, which is the, you know, the victim Colorado Victim Rights Act group that helps administer for supporting victims and their families in recovery and the healing efforts and two or three different things surrounding that.
Physical and mental healing.
I would, I would imagine, Dick, yeah. Certainly a lot of that for.
That's great.
Good, 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 good. All right, all right. With that, uh, this is a proclamation in support of the victims of Colorado Springs shooting. Whereas the town of Breckenridge stands in unwavering solidarity with an L G B T Q community, Club Q, and the victims of the Colorado Springs shooting. And whereas the town of Breckenridge stands with the state religious leaders and municipalities from around the state and condemning this horrific and senseless tragedy. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and town council of the town of Breckenridge. Number one, we honor and remember the victims of this horrific shooting. And two, we urge the Breckenridge community to contribute resources to contribute to community members in need by giving to the Colorado Healing Fund at www dot coloradogives dot org backslash organization backslash C O Healing Fund. Thank you for doing this.
Well written.
All right. Uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, planning commission decisions.
There were no decisions.
So we can, they can stand as not presented for the town manager and staff.
Just two things. If you haven't already, please let Peyton know ASAP if you plan on attending the employee Christmas party on December second, Friday, December second, and Viva Run. Some of you had told her and some of you haven't.
Love the employee Christmas.
No, the other thing, I, she sent out a message for anybody interested in going to Cast in Steamboat Springs uh, the end of January.
You spend the night?
Yeah.
Share room with, do you have, do you have your own? You don't hear a share, share a situation.
So depending, I will not be attending this one because I'll be having knee surgery the week before that, so um, I won't be going, but if you, if, I think Shannon will attend if any of you plan on going. Eric, I don't know if you decided.
It's a tough one for me. That's just a busy time.
I mean, you know, we go to so many if we, and I know Dick had a conflict and Carol, I know you've gone in the past and Jay, uh, Todd went to the last one, but let us know if we don't make it, we don't make it on this one, but.
I feel like with him in surgery and Shannon gone, I might have to step in too, so, you know.
Exactly.
Never know. And I might need you around to help me.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll be at the security.
All right, is that it, Rick? All you got? All right, report of the mayor and council, uh, no cast or M M C. Open space.
It's supposed to be last night, but they moved it because of some sort of children's vacation uh till next Monday. And I'll be in Boston and um, uh, sure, uh, uh, Todd is going to um fill in for me. And much to the disappointment of Bozak, I'm sure.
Made in the fridge.
Yeah, yeah. Tourism, Mr. Carlton. Yes, um, well, Lucy filled us in on some of it. Um, Oktoberfest final kind of final tap, pretty close to final tally came in. We, we didn't make much money on this one. Uh, you know, the B T O typically pre-COVID, you know, they were making two hundred thousand plus. I mean, it's a big chunk of the budget for the B T O. Um, this year we barely broke even. Um, and that was based on new beer vendors and trying to still work out those arrangements. Um, we really were short volunteers and so the B T O was paying nonprofits to have their members um come in and volunteer. So a lot of increased costs, reduced revenue. Um, so he, the B T O is really taking a hard look at how this event is executed. And um, to try to really assess the best way to to do it.
So I, I would just say for myself, um, I think the B T O is gonna have to decide what this event is supposed to be. Is this a town event or is this event to make money for the B T O? Because as a town event, I thought it was better this year than it has been in many years prior to the pandemic. So if this is an event that the B T O puts on, that's an outstanding event, I think it was a winner. If it's about the B T O making money, I think we need to assess that in a different way, so.
Sure. No, that'll be part of the question.
Yeah.
Yep, um, so um, again, they're really working on the question, are there more tourists in town or are there more locals in town? You know, and really trying to come up with a data set to measure that. You know, we ask that a lot and anecdotally, we all have our own answers, right? But to try to have some data to back that up. This is your guys Oktoberfest, correct? No, this is just in regards, regards to to uh town traffic. You know, look at traffic counts, trail counts, sales tax, schools, registration, lodging data, mobile housing, you know, the creepy uh kind of a mobile, mobile, mobile phone data. Um, yeah, and yeah, I love the way Lucy's attacking this and I think that they will get us a dashboard of some kind by which we can really have a better sense.
Lucy's working with town staff.
Pardon me?
Is partnering with town staff and
Right.
And we've contracted with R R C and we'll be coming back on a work session to show you some of our initial data.
And she was just informing the board of, of the work being done. I thought it was fascinating, the approach and really look forward to seeing some of those results. Um, Wendy gave an update on B C A. Um, um, then, let's see. Um, we're having a retreat coming up and we talked about that, you know. Interesting that the B T O, you know, twenty twenty three is already planned out. So we're having our retreat. We're talking about twenty twenty four. Um, and it's probably gonna be in early March, very strategic. Um, obviously, they're gonna have a lot of contingencies as there's a lot of unknowns trying to plan that far out. Um, and uh, you know, the execution really how it comes at the staff level, but to do a retreat with the board to to talk about the strategic approach and uh, I I I look forward to that. Uh, the Be Like Breck campaign, which Lucy reported on, they, she reported on as well. Um, uh, the things are filling. I I think Lucy touched on this as well, you know, I we're, we're definitely seeing a flattening this, this year. I think when she reported a few weeks ago, there was a pretty dramatic flattening. Um, I think we're seeing the gap shrink. Will we make it up? Probably not. We'll probably be flat, flat or down a little bit, you know, this winter from, from last year. Uh, we're still up from twenty nineteen. We'll Uh, we're still up from twenty nineteen, we'll still be up from twenty nineteen, so uh, so continuing to watch that data.
I would argue that less people made it makes a better product.
I don't disagree, Jeffrey, yep. Um, so, and I think the Be Like Breckage, that that campaign, I mean, Lucy's very humble. But that campaign is is being noticed nationwide, you know, and the state is really emulating it at the the Colorado Tourism Board, so. Um, you know, that campaign, I think is very effective. And it's continuing to grow momentum.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good meeting.
Carol, history.
Um, two things, first, Larry Crispell was honored with the philanthropy award from the Summit Foundation. Um, second, this will take some council discussion and input, um, so. Um, Larissa was talking to the contractor about the Millney project, that's a project catty cornered from the library. Um, and there is an opportunity to continue with the same contractor. And by continuing, there could be some significant cost savings. Um, again, this is just gauging general council support and they'd come back to us with hard numbers. Um, but the contractor is estimating that would be about half of what they originally thought phase two would be. Um, they think the opportunities are great to have continuity of contractor, we know. The contractor is retiring, so if we're not able to continue with this contractor, likely the cost would increase. We, there's also the possibility of losing some of the subcontractors that have offered in-kind services. When this came in front of us about a year ago, we chose this pho- phased approach to ask Breckridge History to seek. Some grant opportunities and they really did their due diligence for federal funds, other grant opportunities. Were really able to secure funds, but they are securing in-kind donations and also individual donations. Um, so they are asking to gauge general support for continuing straight into phase two. And what this would really do is bring life to this park sooner. Um, if we leave it as phase one, it would be more difficult to interpret. For the public and display artifacts, so um. They would, they would like, I I support this project and just wanted to. Gauge general council support and giving the green light to come back to us with more solid numbers. For what phase three would look like.
I'd like to learn more about it. What I'm hearing is I think originally the phase two was planned to be around one, one point two. Uh, million and that they preliminarily think they might be able to come in closer to that six hundred dollar range.
Yeah, they said five percent.
You know, certainly if they could stay close to a fifty percent savings. Probably worth pursuing.
It's worth hearing, man.
Twenty four budget and this would just be moving the money forward to twenty four.
But we don't typically, it's not, it's, it's probably in their budget, I doubt. That we put it in our C I P, so it's not part of our restriction, this is new money for us, yeah.
But we did already generally approve it, I I think you're right, Rick, I don't remember seeing it in the C I P. But I do remember we generally approved the phasing approach with that timing, so. I'm with Rick.
We didn't know when phase two might happen.
Right, right.
Because it just depends on a lot of stuff, I mean.
I'm with you, if we can see that kind of savings and I think it's a worthy project that uh I I'm I'm in sport.
Well, and the phase two is what makes it such a worthy project, like getting those buildings actually open and. You know, ha- being able to have the um people who are working for Breck History in the buildings is. The reason to do that project, so I feel like there is no reason to keep putting it off. It's like ten years that we've been putting this project on, but I think we should wrap it up.
I like it, and Larry, I trust.
I uh, I I would love to see this space activated and to see the project move forward. Uh, if the opportunity was given to do that, um, I'm also aware that like you said with some of the subcontractors. Their main plumbing contractor was uh, is on the same timeline as the general contractor and. Again, anytime you get a new plumber in there, they're going, oh, would this guy do and they're gonna be trying to redo some of that. And so keeping that continuity and keeping the consistency, I'm for um reviewing it and moving forward.
Yeah, I'd like to hear, learn more about it.
Oh, yeah.
Like Jay said, plumbers can be real backstabbers.
I mean, I will follow up with Larissa.
Yeah, I. He's going from this act to history, he's like.
Uh, Creative Earths. We got a meeting December fifteenth.
Cool.
Events.
We've already had reported out this month.
Jeffrey, what would you like to add to events?
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, do you remember?
Do you guys, do you guys realize that you can have an event on town open space? Without a permit, as long as you're under fifty people?
What do you guys think about that?
That's per the definition of event.
Pardon me?
That's, that's part of the definition of event in our ordinance.
Really?
Fifty or more.
Should we change that? I mean, what sparks your?
You know, like the, the, on Facebook, they're advertising a world. Sm- uh Fat Bike Day at the B and B Trailhead, December third, and it's all over the front range, all over, you know.
Who's they?
I don't know, some guy in Silverthorne, I mean, it's, it's like, you know, but it's all a buddy of mine called me from Denver. He started, you know, he started on social media, yeah, I just think, I mean, you know, you, if for for a local. You know, they have a one or two days to recreate, they're gonna go to Lorium or B and B of Saliva or. Or probably not Saliva because that's county, but some of these local uh, local amenities that we use and love. And all of a sudden, there's forty nine people there, you know, having a wedding or having a a mass, I just, I don't, I don't say we should deny it. But I think we should know when and where and who.
I, I think the thinking, and I don't disagree with you, but I think the thinking is it, it gets overwhelming for the events folks. To try to um. Manage every single little small family reunion and, I mean. You, you, you need to pick a number somewhere and balance the impacts against the reality of managing the smaller events. And I think that was how we came to the fifth.
Okay, well, I mean, if, yeah.
I almost think there's something else we should do that has nothing to do with the number, but. This is different than a wedding.
That's gonna be more than fifty people and and I think.
It's advertised, I somehow, well, that's happened before and I think Shannon.
Favor and let me, I'd really like Shannon to be here because she has been tied to this for so many years. And uh, I'd like to have her part of the conversation.
And I, I, I reached.
Let's bring it back and we'll talk about it more.
But for Jeffrey, if you can. Why, I talked to Scott and Ian about it too.
If you can get, see, find any of the posts or anything, then send them to Shannon because I think this happened once before and she reached out to the guy and said. You can't do this without a permit.
You know what, uh, Scott reached out to, or Tony reached out to this guy too, so. Um, the, the, yeah, we can, we'll wait till Shannon gets here and talk about it and I could be just on my own on this one, so.
I don't think you are though, yeah.
All right, childcare.
Jay. Sweet, workforce housing, anything to add?
No, I think.
Social equity, anything to add?
No.
Right, other matters? Nothing?
I wanted to talk about open source events, oh, I did.
You did, good, good, we could do it again.
No, no, no. You could have a whole new discussion about it, take a different side, maybe.
Anything, other matters, other matters, going once, going twice, sold.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Adjourned, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yeah.
Have a wonderful holiday.
Enjoy your pies.